So there is a quorum of us here and since the public is here with us and we want to use their time to best of our abilities, we'll go ahead and start right on time at seven o'clock. So we'll call the meeting to order. So, welcome everybody. Welcome to the, and I know participants can't see how many of them there are. I recently participated in a webinar and that was rather frustrating for me as well. So to the 105 participants, welcome. Thank you to all of the leadership team and the administrative staff that are here tonight to answer the questions. Thank you to the nurses as well. And thank you to the school committee for coming to listen. We wanted to, let's see, where should we start? Um, so let's start with, so tonight is an open forum where members of the public can ask questions and that's why we have so many people here to answer them because our superintendent doesn't know where every pencil is hiding and where every student is at every minute of every day, but a lot of the rest of the people here do. So again, we're grateful to them. I mean, in order to facilitate the speaking tonight, we will have the people who want to speak raise their hands. In order to find that function, if you are not familiar with it yet in Zoom, if you click on the participants list and you see your name underneath at the bottom there, you can see the raise hand function. That will move your name up to the top in our attendees list. Currently, there are five people who have raised their hands, but I don't know in which order. So I'll catch up with that in just a second. Okay, so the fact that you guys are raising your hands all right now means that you're in alphabetical order. So that everybody gets an opportunity to speak, we are still going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Michelle Horegon has volunteered to time that tonight. She will kindly let you know when you have 30 seconds left so that you can wrap up. It is difficult sometimes to hear someone butting in over you while you're speaking. So just also keep an eye on her because she'll raise her hand. At the end of three minutes, we will ask you to wrap it up so that everybody gets an opportunity to just speak. There are now 143 people here, 44 and 45. And so if all of those people speak, and people speak multiple times and people speak for five or 10 minutes, everybody will not get an opportunity to speak. Also, we realize that we only have until eight o'clock. So at eight, throughout this meeting, we'll be posting a Google link which will allow you to put in any additional comments or questions that you might have that we could consider in the future. And those comments will be shared with the school committee and also with the leadership team. So thank you if you want to put your comments in there as well. So at the end of the hearing part at eight o'clock, the school committee will then reflect on what we heard. So I would ask all the school committee members to be sort of listening for what your top one or two takeaways are from what you hear tonight. That will allow us to sort of focus in and have a meaningful wrap up on that. Let's see, so during the hearings, yeah, I covered that. Yeah, covered that. Okay, the other thing is, we're only going to be able to recognize people who have their names so that we don't have people who might not be members of the community or the like speaking. So if for some reason you are on a phone or something of that nature, if you could try and change your name to an actual like human name, I don't know if that's possible, or reconnect with a different device. Is there anything you think we should add? Michelle Horegon?
I would just want to thank the leadership team for being here tonight. They've put in countless hours already this week and just all us be mindful that tomorrow morning they're going to be added again, ensuring that our most precious assets are being taken care of. So let's just all be mindful of them and their time and what we're here to do, which is to take care of our kids.
And we also have a reminder from the minutes taker that Mahala, if you could, when you speak, spell your name, because even though Amy Cooper sounds easy, Mahala might not know that you don't spell your name A M Y. So that would be helpful for her. And also, if you can just give your street address and town. So I would say, Michelle Bailey, B A I L E Y, two Remington Road, Buonum. All right, so people raised their hands quite quickly, but I did see, it may, it may be in order now because I'm seeing people that came in after. So that's great. So, and Bradley, you are going to be allowed to talk. And if you would like to unmute yourself?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, we can. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Nicola Bradley. We live on 110 Gregory Island Road in South Hamilton. My question is actually, members from a collective group of 288 parents in the district collaborated to formulate this question about the COVID response team and its role in toggling between the learning models. If the team is making recommendations based on data and facts, this data should be documented and publicly available to show equal input and data-driven decisions. This should include a number of positive cases in our schools. And for example, in the last toggle, exactly how many teachers and families had traveled who had pending test results, since that was given as the reason. Currently, the COVID response team circumvents open meeting law. So many questions about the decision-making process are left unanswered. Also, there's a strong representation from the district union leaders and school nurses. However, the team does not have adequate representation from the medical community or parents. Currently, there is no licensed medical doctor or advanced practitioner weighing in. Given that the COVID response teams' decisions have such an essential role in the decision to toggle in and out of models, I have three questions. One, will you reevaluate the response teams makeup and add a parent representative and a licensed doctor or advanced practitioner? Two, will you have a more formal vote so that one member does not unduly influence the group and that a consensus of the team's recommendation is ensured? And three, will you make these meetings public so that is no further issues of transparency?
Let me, I'll get started on those. And Tom, Dana, and Leah, I would invite you to join in as well. But currently, the COVID response team is structured when the plan was put forth as an advisory body to the superintendent. One of the things, so just to quickly be sure that everybody knows who's part of that team. I am part of that team. Tom Gary actually facilitates the meeting. Leah Tavakin as our lead nurse is on that team. The public health nurse from Hamilton, the public health nurse from Buonum, the chair of the Board of Health from Hamilton, Dana Alara as our school committee rep, and we have two representatives from the HWEA. So we have nine people on that group. That group votes formally every meeting. So that is something that happens. One of the things that is, it is not a public meeting. It is as an advisory group. That is not the structure of it. And part of the reason for that is that we are able to look at specific data that would not be appropriate to discuss publicly. So for example, the public health nurses can share, you know, we have a situation, they can talk about whether or not there are any students that may be involved in the school that they are tracking, they are looking to, they may be able to say, we've got this situation or that situation. They never give family names, but they give far more detail in how it might impact the schools than would be appropriate to share publicly. So that, that is the, the structure of the team at this point. What we do publish is the, you know, on our website, we have a list of the, the data around positive cases in Hamilton and Buonum and surrounding communities. And there is a list to the side that's also been sent out in communications around all the other facets of data that we look at. From what are the, as you had mentioned, close contact data, close contacts of close contacts can, can often be a challenge. What are hospitalizations looking like? What is the testing system looking like? So there are a wide variety of factors that are debated and discussed. To capture all that in a single document is challenging. That would require more capacity than we currently have at, at any given meeting. And one of the things that is challenging with our data sources is that we, the Department of Education, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has one way of reporting the data and one timeframe, the dates that start and stop for seven days and 14 days. Our Maven system has another start-stop date and how that system reports it out. And then how the, the state level reports it out. So those are some of the challenges that we have around that. One of the things that I would share that we are thinking about right now that maybe something that could be manageable is talking about these close contact cases because they have a really significant impact. So if we looked right now at the district and compared the number of positive COVID cases to the number of close contacts, close contacts are a significantly higher number. And that becomes particularly problematic when we look at staffing. So that is an additional piece of data that we are looking to see if we can get into a spreadsheet to be able to report out on a regular basis to the community. One other piece I'll offer there is that when we look at, for example, staff that might be close contacts, it's not just the quality of those close contacts, but it's what positions they hold and how easily or not easily we may be able to cover that. Jen, do you want to just give an example at how that plays out in the schools in terms of whether, whether you have a close contact and how that person's position really impacts the challenge?
Like a number, a low number of five close contacts across the district staff would have a different impact if it were five people in one building versus one in each building. So obviously, if it's one person in each of the school buildings, we can generally find a way to cover that. But if it were to be five classroom teachers in my building, that would be a really difficult proposition. That would be a different situation depending on the length of time those close contacts need to be out and exactly who they are. So I think that's one of those lenses that that data, that number might look like it needs to be a certain way, but it really has implications in terms of where those numbers are located within buildings.
And I'll ask other, just Tom and Leah to jump in. But before we do that, I also want to respond to your question about, could we have doctor, you know, a parent in a doctor assigned to this group? That's something that we could look at. Part of what we need to look at is that this piece of information regarding more detailed information about people in the community. Again, no names are ever used, but there, there is information shared that could potentially be result in people being able to be identified. In terms of a parent, the, the parent challenge is that we have parents that have a lot of perspectives, right? So is it the parent that emails and says, are you going remote for a while? Or I'm really concerned that you're absolutely holding to the six-foot social distancing? Because when my second grader comes home, my 80-year-old mom is there to take care of her, and I need to be sure she's absolutely safe. Or is it the parent that says, we have two working parents, we are at our wits' end, we need our kids back in school, this is not working for our family. So when we say parents, there's a lot of different perspectives that are out there. And that would be a complication in terms of thinking about what that might look like. Just other members of the COVID response team, Tom, Dana, or Leah, anything that you want to add to this piece?
I just want to say, so again, this is advisory committee, but we have two public health nurses, Rachel Lee and Mary Beth Ting. And they, they're in meetings twice a week with the state epidemiologists. And they're getting the latest guidance. And if they don't have an answer to that, then they can call them on the phone. So these, these epidemiologists that work for the state, they're accessible. And also, you know, we're looking at the transmission in school. We use the health portal to document our, our cases. You know, as parents, you're probably familiar with it because you're filling out your, your symptoms tracker in the morning, or perhaps you've gotten emails from us asking for physicals through the health portal. But you know, the system's set up so that we can kind of take a look at what the district is, looks like in terms of, you know, close contacts and cases and kind of support each other as nurses to make sure, you know, we have, we're watching siblings and whatnot. That's all I have to say.
If I can offer any insight, you know, to piggyback on what Superintendent Benios mentioned, we do look at the different pieces of data. And for example, you know, the public health nurse for Hamilton shares information on the Hamilton cases. The public health nurse for Buonum shares those case, you know, the case counts and the specifics on Buonum. Leah, of course, shares the school information. David Smith, the chairman of the Board of Health, shares the hospitalization data. And I work with John Koch, the union leadership, on the data surrounding our mitigation strategy surveys, because that's another important piece. So we do have an organized structure. We review all of that data and don't look at specific data points and installation. You know, that was a lesson learned from the first closure in September was never to look at one single point. So I do believe that all things are weighed equally when we look.
I just wanted to bring up a point here that while it is important to be giving very thorough answers right now, that given the constraints that this agenda has set up, if we do not somehow expedite this answering process, we're only going to get through about four questions.
Right.
And, you know, I want to make sure that everyone who wants to speak tonight gets an opportunity to speak. So if we can just keep that in mind as we, as we move forward.
Yep.
But I do appreciate the thorough answers.
Yeah, thank you, David, for bringing that. Okay, so Amy Cooper is going to speak, and then the next person is Ally.
Is this working? Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Amy Cooper, and A I M E C O O P E R. I live at 108 Main Street in Buonum and a parent of a second grader at Beaker, Cobaldogs. I just want to first thank all the teachers and administrators. I think we all know how hard you're all working and putting in so many hours. And I just want to know that as a parent, you to know that as a parent, I'm thankful for that. And a special shout out to Kathy O'Shea, second graders. But my question is regarding the district's subbing needs. For example, during the previous school committee meeting, I think on the second earlier this month, Superintendent Benios, you discussed the subbing shortages. And obviously, that's impacted some of our students' ability to be in school at all times. So as a parent, I want to help out. What can I do to help in their staff shortages? In particular, in my child's school, for example. So I think just what I'm wondering, and I think some of the other parents are wondering, is, you know, what can we as parents or other members of the community, you know, how do we apply to be a sub? How are subs assigned to different cohorts and classrooms? Right now, is Hamilton, Buonum only hiring long-term positions? And if they are, why? And again, I'm also asking this question on behalf of the collaborative. But thank you for hearing my question.
Great. Thank you, Amy. I'm going to have an elementary principal just answer how you apply and what open positions we currently have. And then Eric, would you be able to speak for the secondary level?
Yeah, so on the, on the elementary side, we would love to have more help with, with coverage. We right now have posted on School Spring, I think we are calling them long-term TA subs. Is that what they're called, I think? They're listed as two-day-a-week positions. And part of that was so that it could line up with, if we had parents who were willing to help out, we could line up those two days with the two days that your kid is in school, so that you can be home when they are on remote learning. So that is an application process through School Spring. If you are interested, I would say apply later and also contact your elementary building principal so that we can get that going as quickly as possible. Because I know that we are all looking for extra bodies to help out, either when folks are sick, when folks are close contacts, or if folks have COVID-like symptoms and have to be out for a day or two waiting to get results back. That, those all impact coverage in the buildings.
And Vinnie, would you be able to throw the School Spring website on the chat so that folks can access that? In education, we use a site called School Spring. You can search by the state and then by the, the type of job that you're looking for. And you, you should be able to find that listed. If folks are, are again, interested in something like this, I would also invite you to reach out to your building principals, and they can talk a little bit about what might be available in particular buildings.
The, the human resources section of the district website has an embedded piece that has just our postings. So rather than going through the full School Spring website and sift through, you can go right through our website to find it.
And Tom just posted that in the chat.
Awesome.
And Eric, similar type of thing, you know, to David's point, want to be mindful of time. But anything you want to add at the secondary level?
Secondary level, we, we use two permanent subs. It took, took me three weeks to hire the first one and a little over a month to hire the second one. But we currently have two permanent subs. Most of the situations we've run into is that teachers can teach remotely if they're out for a day or out for, for a day or two. So that's worked out for us. So we've actually been pretty functional in the past, probably in the past month without any major issues.
Sheldon, move to the next question? You muted, Michelle? Ally is already here. And then Jennifer Carr will be next.
Hi, my name is Ally Moffett, and I live at Two Smithwood Terrace in Hamilton. And that's A L L I E, Moffett, M O F F E T T. First, I do want to thank the school committee and the superintendent and the principals for holding this special meeting. I do want to express my gratitude to each and every person working so hard to try to provide what's best for our students. In the past...
Oh my gosh, that was my fault. I pushed Ally instead of Amy. My fault. Ally, you are muted now. Let me get you back. So, sorry. Who? There you are, Ally. Sorry. So sorry, Ally.
Hi, no problem, Michelle.
So sorry, I was trying to move Amy. Sorry.
Hi. No, I was just expressing my gratitude to everybody. I know everyone's working hard. In the meetings, over time, I've noticed there's been three main themes that I think we need to kind of focus on. One being communication, one being safety of not only our students, but our staff, and our staffing crisis. I think what gets lost sometimes is a school is made up of more than just students. And we have faculty and staff that also need to be considered. And I first want to ask about communication. I know you put a Google chat or a Google link. Is that going to be going forward where we can put questions or concerns that arise? Or is there a contact person we should be talking to? If so, what is their contact information? And what is the timeframe where we can expect responses? At least just an acknowledgement that a communication was initiated? And will this information be public? My, my question in terms of staffing, I heard a lot of the school principals setting forth these, you know, plans on having kids go back to school more full-time. There were talks about K through one going back more and pulling the high school out. You know, no one was really talking about third and fourth grade, where we have this really crucial year of, you know, learning how to read, transitioning to learning or to reading to learn. So everybody has needs in their level. And I think what's getting lost is that we just don't have the staffing right now to, to sustain what we have. So I have questions on, you know, where are we at in terms of staff who are on leave, who were due to come back in January? Have we reached out to them? Are they coming back in January? Have more teachers asked for leave? How are we supporting, you know, these, the teachers to be able to sustain the plan we have without overburdening them with trying to get kids in more days? And also, I heard the superintendent talk about that there was a real concern on what we were going to do if we have snow days. Where are we in terms of supporting teachers to be able to teach remotely? The middle school principal said, you know, they didn't even get devices until mid-November. Do the teachers have devices to be able to set up at home to teach remotely? Or are we going to be requiring them to come into the school when it's not safe, you know, to hold school because of weather? Also, in the plans to get kids back into school, a lot of them were to have less than six feet of distance. I'm wondering why that's presented as a viable option when the agreement between the district and this, the teachers' union is that they would have at least six feet of distance at all times. So I just feel like that's a little bit of a setup to throw the teachers under the bus when that hasn't been negotiated yet. So I'm wondering if there is a setup to renegotiate with the teachers' association before these plans are having so much time and energy being spent on creating these plans offered to the parents when it seems like we're not getting all of the information. There's some information that's left out.
Excuse me, Ally, you're, you're, you have 15 seconds left.
Okay, great. So, and just to wrap up, you know, I also am wondering if there's going to be another meeting between the school committee and the local board of health, because the last time we had a meeting, it was, we'll toggle at eight cases, and we've been at 44. And I know that most of the toggle has been actually due to staffing. So I'm wondering if there will be a separation between when it's a staffing issue versus when it's a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to jump in real quick and just remind people, there is going to be a Board of Health, like one of those open forum coffees, if somebody knows the date coming up.
Okay, and Ally, I'm going to do my best to get through your questions. And I would invite you to, to reach out to my office as well if I, if I don't answer things as thoroughly as I can in the short time. Communication, first and foremost, I would start, if it's a classroom issue, start with your, your, your child's teacher. If it's a building issue, and, and even a district issue, I would say, start with your building principal. If they can't answer that for you, they can direct you to the person that is best able to provide the answer. So I would, I would suggest that as a methodology of communication. One of the things that you had shared was, and I think I'm interpreting this correctly, staffing problems being related to bringing students back in third and fourth grade. And that actually, you know, what, where we see biggest staffing issues is when we have people that need to quarantine, right? Those close contact folks. And in some cases, folks that have COVID. You know, Jen, I know you had a situation the other day in your building, or maybe it was in a different school where a teacher came in, they, they were, you know, had a stuffy nose, that kind of thing. We are cautious. We send people home. We make sure that they get tested. So we have a lot of people because of COVID that are out. Though, that is the staffing issue. The day-in, day-out coverage of classes and assignment to, in assignment of the primary instructor for classes, we are, we are okay in that. What the issue is in three and four, what we are looking at in bringing K and one back is using some of our more global spaces in some of the elementary schools. So we can currently figure out a way how to get K and one in using some of those spaces and continuing with six-foot social distancing. The problem is, once we use up some of those spaces like art rooms or libraries for K and one, we do not have the space available to do that for all of the grades. So the only way to bring in back all the other grades is to go down to less than to less than six-foot social distancing. And as you indicated, there are a number of concerns related to making that shift. One of the, one of the really big issues for the whole system to work is that when you go below six feet social distancing, you, if a if a child in a classroom comes down with COVID, then the entire class are close contacts and every family there would then need to start to quarantine. So there's a lot of reasons for that six-foot social distancing, but one of the things that it does enable is that if there is a case, we have put these precautions in place so that other students and the teacher in the classroom are not necessarily close contacts. So that that's a key.
Mary Beth, just, I just want to clarify because the the issue wasn't that I want the kids back in school. My issue is that there are different needs for different levels, but but the representation, because what I'm hearing fighting for is the high school and the K through one. There's, there are other students that have needs and I think we're we're doing this all as a one-size-fits-all and we need to, we need to talk about the individual needs and how we can creatively fulfill those needs without jeopardizing the safety.
Yeah, let me, let me take a quick second and again, I'm mindful of David's caution here, but I'm wondering, Stacy and Carolyn, can you just speak to the kinds of, and maybe Craig, the latest work being done on Wednesday? One quick sentence, but the kinds of ways that we are looking at different groups of students and trying to figure out how we respond differently to the different needs that are out there, because I agree with you, Ally, it's certainly not a one-size-fits-all model. We've been talking more globally about K one. But, you know, each day we are adjusting and thinking about how we meet the individual needs of kids. So Craig, quick second on the Wednesdays that you're working on?
Sure. So we've been bringing in special ed students that are in our programs for quite a few weeks now. And this past week, we started bringing in, inviting in students who are struggling academically, particularly with the asynchronous periods to work in school with some limited supports. We had about a dozen students join us today, which was great, and we were able to connect with them and they made a lot of progress on the work that they were missing. So overall, it was very successful. So we're looking to continue that.
Carolyn, any quick comment at the elementary level? Oh, you muted, Carolyn.
I'm trying to get unmuted. So we currently are bringing in students in the pre-K program as well as our ILP and our Castle program four days a week. And then in for some moderate special ed students, they are coming in for additional tutorials, depending on what is written in their hybrid learning plans. So we are working on ways to bring in our special populations to make sure that we are meeting their needs.
And Stacy, anything you want to add there?
Just piggybacking on what Craig and Carolyn have said, across the district, we have worked to bring our programs for students with disabilities, our more high-needs and complex students in for four days. So they're coming in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday each week. Other students who've been identified as students with disabilities and have IEPs. We have students who may be in a cohort and they may be coming in for time on their off-cohort days. At the secondary level, it is Wednesdays that we have students coming in for additional time. And also our English language learners, we have many of those students who are coming in for additional time in school for in-person support as well. So there's different models depending on the needs of students and that's from pre-K through 12th grade.
Right. And and just, and so we are looking at at different ways of addressing the different needs that are in the district. At the secondary level, another major effort right now is to increase our streaming capacity to give students more time, direct time with teachers. Principal Tracy went to the Ed Fund and received a grant to have 30 additional setups in that school. Craig, I know you will be presenting in a very short timeframe. Your grant is written to try to move that forward at the middle school. So so we are looking at the different needs. You are absolutely correct, correct developmentally and unique individual needs that that students have. We are trying to address those and to be mindful of those. And then finally, you are, you are right about snow days, that we are working really hard to be prepared and to send communications out to families about what to expect. Monitoring the weather quickly because we are certainly entering that season super fast. I want to give you a quick window into how complex the situation, right, is. So in order to answer what's the plan for remote days, we need a plan for our Apple students. We need a plan for the students that are in the hybrid model and would be in person for the day of the snow day. We need a plan for the people that would be hybrid and remote for the day of the school day. If, at the same time, we need to be able to start talking about if the snow day occurs and we have brought K one back, what is the plan for that? At the same time, what is the plan if the entire district is actually remote at that moment because of data that would suggest that that was the appropriate move? And in each of these models, what are the plans for the unique educational plans for our students with disability? We, that is just the elementary consideration for how we get prepped for snow day. And it just gives a little bit of window and the complexity that things that I think if I were sitting outside and not living this, I would be saying, what is the big deal? Just get that done. But there are a lot of different issues and a lot of different programs and scenarios that we need to think through and prep through in order to truly be prepared.
And we have been working on that. I just want to clarify, like, that's not something we haven't started working on. We have been working on it and teachers are really they're preparing for lots of different scenarios because we often lose power in Hamilton when, so what does that look like? And so maybe we do actually have to have a snow day if there's no connectivity or power in town. So we've been working on a variety of different scenarios for weather-related remote learning days if they were to happen.
Thank you. Jennifer Carr, if you'd like to unmute yourself and then Chris M., you'll be next.
I have a question that's related to the remote week last week. We were told that it was unsafe for students to attend courses remotely last week. However, when I went to go pick up my son's materials, the Cutler parking lot was completely full and teachers were in classes teaching. If it's unsafe for students to be in there teaching, why are teachers in there? Even though the chances of transmission are low, even if they're staying in completely separate sections, they would be zero if they were teaching from home. And to follow that up, why is it so important that our teachers are teaching in school? If the kids are remote, why can't the teachers be remote? It's much safer.
Thanks, Jennifer. Let me see if I can quickly talk to the the issues that you're raising. So again, when we went remote, there were a wide variety of factors that were playing into that situation. And certainly, one of the situations was the delay that we were seeing in terms of testing. We had people with tests out and so we didn't know, are they positive, are they negative? We had situations where we had families of individuals that were being tested and they were close contacts and living in the house, but we didn't have, we didn't know if those cases were positive or negative. And so there was a concern about bringing back students into the classroom where you have not a single person in one room, but numbers of students altogether. And one of the biggest concerns that we have is related to lunchtime. As, you know, in that that scenario, we do have students that have masks off for a period of time, so that that was a concern related to the students. What we say to our teachers is that if the students are remote, you can work remotely if you choose, or if you would prefer to come into school, you can, unless there is something like a governor's order that that prevents that. Many of our teachers have their materials in the classroom and they they actually choose to do that, that that is an option for teachers. And, you know, for for a lot of folks, they have kids at home and honestly, it's quieter and easier to work in a classroom. So that that is a scenario that is there. So when when kids are remote and the work is all being done remotely, that is something that we we offer as flexibility for our teachers. Again, many of those teachers choose to come in. Maybe just a quick comment from a principal on that. Ben, you want to jump in?
Yeah, thinking back to the the first two weeks that we were in remote and then last week, all but I think one of my classroom teachers were in. And that was someone who has a long commute, so they just got a chunk of their life back. But really, all their stuff is there. And, you know, to rather than bring those materials back and forth, coming in, having access to your colleagues during lunchtime, someone who's going through the same same thing that you're going through can be really helpful. And it also kind of gives that nice division between like home life and school life. And when we were all at home in the spring, we lost that division and we all know how hard that was. So for a lot of folks, it actually is helpful to be able to come in and teach remotely from the classroom, even though it's not required, it can be nice for for mental health.
And I also want to add too that the additional technology that's available in the classrooms using the smart boards and having two screens also facilitated an easier path for the teachers to be able, especially because they had their full classes together at the elementary level, they had both cohorts together. So the additional technology that was available, I think, made for a more successful week.
Great. Chris M.?
Hi, thank you for hosting this and taking my question. I too am a member of the collective group of nearly 300 parents in the district. And we've kind of come to collaborate on some of these questions tonight, but you know, I want to preface the question by saying, you know, we are really all here. You know, trying to, you know, support the kids. This isn't a group. I've not heard a single person that's been, you know, citing the challenges of, you know, working from home and trying to teach and, you know, all of that, you know, this is, you know, really trying to collaborate to you know, help, you know, what we believe is in our kids' best interest. So in that vein, you know, I think a lot of us believe that, you know, the kids need more days in school and we're seeing a lot of the districts in surrounding communities that have successfully had their kids in school much more than Hamilton has. So in trying to get a sense for the the plan going forward, are we going to see, you know, things that are, you know, maybe more data-driven and more aligned with the D E S E, the governor, you know, all the guidelines and, you know, thoughts from, you know, leadership around the state and the country and the world that is emphasizing in-person days for students, especially the early learners. You know, we just really want to have you know, really well-founded, you know, thoughts and guidance to have the kids back in school. We want those decisions to be made based on, you know, some of those those data and guidelines. And then sort of relatedly, a second part of the question here is, you know, given the model that Hamilton has employed, you know, we have our kids have been in school, you know, a tiny fraction of the number of days of neighboring towns and you know, just trying to get a sense for, you know, what the teachers and the school feels like. You know, those kids have learned relative to what they would typically learn in a sort of normal school year, you know, where are you at with the curriculum?
Your last name and your address, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's Moffett, M-O-F-F-E-T-T, and I own it, Two Smithwood Terrace. And my daughter is a kindergartner, winter.
So Chris, thank you. First of all, I want to share personally, and I think I speak for every member of this team, is that we agree with you. We want students back in school and we, you are not at all in error that there's a lot of concern for for students, particularly not only academically, but from a social and emotional health perspective, when they don't have that structure and they're not in the school setting. So that is a, something that weighs heavily on all of us. And you, what you're hearing from us is it will not be a flip of a switch to go from hybrid to fully remote, but steps along the way, starting to move in that direction. One of the, and we have prioritized our kindergarten and first graders as the group to try to get back in first. At the, at the same time, in order, the the issue that we have is the six-foot social distancing. And the six-foot social distancing, particularly as it relates to increasing upticks in COVID cases and close contacts and all of those different things. So that at some point, you know, I would envision that that is going to be relaxed so that we can start getting more kids back. But in this particular moment with the with the the pieces that we're seeing and and the additional complication of if you go under six feet, anybody that's in that class is a close contact and that that child is then quarantining, should that occur, that that teacher is then quarantining. In terms of the state data, again, I want to reiterate in the the chart that the state puts out is 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 guidance that that it is not a simple solution, like if we fall here, then the answer is remote. And if we fall here, the answer is hybrid. There are too many other complex factors that are playing into it. Hence, hence the COVID response team meetings usually run about two hours, unpacking all of the issues and how they tie together. And and I would say every member of that team understands and values and sits with the weight of knowing kids really need to be in school, that that's that's really important. So I want to share that and echo your concerns and and validate those concerns. Let's see, how about, Jen, do you want to speak to students' progress at the elementary level? And Eric, can you speak to students' progress at the secondary level?
I feel like my teachers would be better off to be able to speak to progress than I am, but I know that kids are one of the things we've seen is that we teachers and students working in these smaller groups in these cohort groups are really able to do a lot more in a single day than they are able to in a full class. So that was something that we learned along the way as teachers were planning and I would say my teacher, a lot of my teachers are attendees right now. I know that they can speak more clearly to this about the progress in their classrooms, but I I do know that overall, everyone's been really surprised at how much progress is being made when kids are in smaller groups. There's a lot more opportunity for individual attention with students and the smaller groups are just able to work at a faster pace, frankly, than in a larger group. So I don't know if Carolyn and Ben want to add to that at all.
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting similar feedback from my teachers and some even even surprised that they are where they are. I think there was a lot of fear that we were going to be moving really slowly. We did a lot of work in the days leading up to to the start of school and those additional 10 P T days to really look closely at the curriculum and what are the things that are that are most important and what are those things that maybe you know, we can put less time in to make sure that we get through all the things we need to get through this year to put kids in a good position as we go into next year and come out of this.
And additionally, I think the, sorry, I think the planning for the off-cohort days, teachers are really trying to continue some of the learning so that they can leverage that when kids come back into the classroom. So the pacing hasn't been as big a problem as we thought it was going to be.
No, I'm, my phone is blowing up with texts from my teachers who are watching, who are reassuring me that those those charts that we made at the end of August, beginning of September, they're they're keeping pace with that at various grade levels and they're really pleased and surprised by that.
That's great to hear and I appreciate that. It's just kind of, you know, one follow-up thought there is in response to Mary Beth, you know, I hear the I hear the concerns about the data and the number of cases and, you know, all of this, you know, second wave, it's, you know, been horrible. At the same time, you know, Charlie Baker has been, you know, reiterating his, you know, guidance and pleas for schools to be, you know, in person as much as possible and it, you know, with what we're seeing in neighboring communities, you know, having more school days, it just really feels like Hamilton is marching to the beat of their own drum and, you know, we feel that. is marching to the beat of their own drum and, uh, you know, we feel that, um, you know, is, uh, you know, impacting, uh, the the kid's ability to, um, you know, get, you know, the real full experience and the education that, you know, I think they would otherwise have.
Thanks, Chris, and a a couple of thoughts around that, um, one I share with the school committee and it's certainly a document still in progress, but we, uh, another town started a where are you right now in terms of teaching and learning, you know, how many days are you in and and at least in this chart, and it certainly was in every surrounding community. Um, but most were doing exactly what we are doing in this moment and getting prepped, ready to enter K and one. One of the, you know, one of the things that we looked at is, you know, what about A and P M where kids could come in for part of the day and we could still keep the six-foot social distancing. But even if we do that, we actually lose instructional time for students. Um, we actually get more instructional time in the model that we currently have than even trying to get that consistency of a half-day every day of the week. Um, I know, you know, one of our neighboring towns does bring kids in, um, every day or every four days. Um, but they they do not follow the six-foot social distancing piece and that is that is something that the community um, here has talked about, um, and has has been a a value that that folks have had. And I I suspect that you would see a wide ra range of opinions around that and people's comfort level based on what is happening in terms of the the spread of the virus, you know, when they would be more comfortable reducing that and when they would be less comfortable reducing that. Just a a quick anecdote. Um, you know, I know, you know, when I sent out the information that we were going remote, I know that was was deeply upsetting for many families. But I I think it's also helpful for to know that when we went back to hybrid and I don't know, Maeve, a principal could speak to that. Every single principal contacted me and said, I have parents calling saying, I don't want my kids back. Given the current situation, what can we do in terms of teaching them remotely? But would one principal just jump in and speak to that?
I can speak to that at the high school. It happened really quickly where we went from my last school committee presentation, we had approximately twelve percent of the kids in um, a full remote situation for various reasons. Over a three-day period, we jumped to nineteen percent. Just, um, through last weekend up until, actually, I just got one about an hour ago, a request to go remote. So they're still coming in and people are a little tentative, so that number, I'm assuming, will keep rising.
And and one of the things that that we sit with and try to balance is that when we can solve a problem for a particular group of families, we really want this. We are remarkably aware that when we solve it for one group, we create a whole host of problems for another group. And that is, that's what we sit with every day, trying to get that balance right. And, you know, just in my my own brief experience here, there have been times that I've made decisions that one group of families will be really not happy with. And then, you know, I'll make a a different decision and then another group isn't happy. And and they all have real valid needs. They all have very valid perspectives. Um, but it is that balance and it is it is difficult and, um, that is something that we attempt to do. Do we, you know, can I tell you at every moment, have we always gotten that balance right? I'm not sure, but I can tell you that that's the value that we sit with and what we attempt to do.
So you guys have tough choices to make. Um, I don't envy you. Um, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind the panel, we have like six minutes left and we have over seven people who have questions. If you can keep it brief, Mary Koppel, you are next.
Hi there, Mary Koppel, uh, K O P P E L, and I live at Forty Perkins and I have two elementary schoolers at Bueker and I will try to be quick. Um, a few, a few weeks ago, the elementary principals gave a fantastic presentation on what life is like inside the school. And I want to commend them and thank them for that because as a parent, it was so eye-opening and wonderful to see what's actually going on because we hear it from our kids, but it's really great to see what things have been like and hear what has worked and what has needed to be adapted. One of the things that came up in that presentation was, um, the desire, um, well, the the, uh, need to get the youngest learners back in the building more, um, particularly K one, who really are incapable of accessing their education remotely, um, due to literacy concerns. Um, never mind tech abilities. Most of them are better at tech than I am. Um, so I wanted to ask about the timeline for that, um, and what where the planning is in that process. I know that the principals that spoke at that meeting mentioned that, uh, the K and one teachers were on board um, and very much wanted it to happen, um, and that there was a way to, um, utilize other spaces so that the six-foot distancing was not even necessarily going to be sacrificed. So, um, in my book, I don't see any reason why that shouldn't be, you know, thoroughly in the works. And so I'm curious what the timeline is for that and where we stand on that. Related question, somewhat related, and I know that Mary Beth, you've alluded to this. Um, the six-foot distancing I know is, um, part of the, um, M O A with the, um, teachers' union. And I wanted to ask, I recognize that maybe this week, when numbers are pretty atrocious in Massachusetts, is not the right time to consider renegotiating that. I'm curious if there are any plans to renegotiate that going forward, potentially for the younger, um, students, or is it a blanket policy um, across the board? Because obviously, a seventeen-year-old coughing is going to project a virus further than a five-year-old coughing. So, um, I didn't know if there are any plans in the works to actually work with the union on changing that. Um, I'm also curious if it is a across-grade levels sort of, um, requirement and if there's any room for renegotiating that. And maybe that renegotiating, maybe that renegotiation isn't appropriate this week or this month, but at some point, are we going to take that back up?
So let me offer a couple of thoughts and then I'll quickly turn it over to principals because yes, things are in the works and there is a lot of thought about um, dates and times related to K one, depending, of course, on what the what happens in the world. But in terms of the the six-foot social distancing, you are correct, that is part of our M O A. Um, also part of our M O A is language that circumstances are going to change and there may be times in which we need to come back and rethink things. Um, that and that this six-foot social distancing, again, that is not the only reason why we can't shift that. Um, you know, we have, um, in 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 our M O A, we also have a lot of families that send their kids to school because there is six-foot social distancing and that they signed up for hybrid because that was the the scenario that was presented. Um, and as, you know, we are, we are all hopeful, right? Um, that there is, there does seem to be an an end in sight here. And as we get closer, my own perspective is, and I I I don't have a reason to think that we're not going to be able to work collaboratively with everybody that has an investment in six-foot social distancing to say that this the situation has changed, right? We can now think about, um, different levels of social of social distancing. As you alluded to, this moment does not feel like that 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 time, um, given that what's happening. But I I do think that that's something that we can work with when the situation is right and is starting to settle down. Um, so I I'll I'll share that. And again, I just want to reiterate that the sick, it is not, uh, you know, only an M O A issue with the teachers' union. We have families that count on that. Um, and we have a lot of potential staffing issues. Should we, should we shrink that? Um, and we we put families at risk of having lots and lots of families having children at home that could be quarantining if we do it prematurely. Um, just, um, elementary principals, quick overview on the K one thinking?
Sure. So we are working hard on a plan. Um, there are some things that might not come to mind when we talk about moving kindergartners and first graders in. We are absolutely maintain, planning to maintain that six-foot social distancing, which means that some classrooms can be used because of the number of students that are in, um, both cohorts assigned to a classroom. But there are other classrooms that are too small. And so we need to utilize spaces like my cafeteria or library at Cutler School be used as classrooms. Um, art rooms and other spaces at other at other schools. Um, but technology, uh, we don't have, uh, smart boards or other technology. Um, we don't have sanitation like a sink in every classroom, so we're trying to, um, make sure that we have adequate um, access to water and safe egresses and, um, I feel like there's other things on that list, Ben, but it's getting late and I don't have the list in front of me.
Um, yeah, the 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 hygiene and potential plumbing issues is one of them. Um, thinking about, um, A V and projection, uh, do we take our existing stuff and move it over, but knowing that it's aging? Is it more cost-effective to buy the new thing that we would have would have bought in a year or two and buy that now? Um, so that's a piece that we're that we're pricing out. Um, the pedagogy of how do we do this with students? Um, you know, we talked about January um, broadly as something possible. And now thinking, does it make sense to have a week and a half off and then come back to something totally different that the kids aren't familiar with? Um, and thinking that that mid-January might be a better target date for that. Um, so that we can have them back to something familiar at the beginning of January, um, to kind of get back into that rhythm of what is social distancing, what does this feel like in school? Um, and then have a couple of weeks to do that before we bring everyone together and then move to a different space that looks and feels with a little bit different and there are more students. Um, but yes, definitely maintain that, um, that six-foot social distancing in whatever space we end up using.
Tracy Westgate, you are next.
Hi there. Thank you so much for, um, having us all tonight. Um, my daughter, I have two, uh, sorry, Tracy, T R A C E Y, Westgate, W E S T G A T E, number three eighty-five, Lake Drive in Hamilton. Um, we have two remote-only learners, one in second grade and one in fifth grade from The Color. And my daughter actually wrote a letter that she wanted me to share with you all today. Hi, my name is Maeve and I'm in the fifth grade. I'm writing to share about my experience in school this year. I like our Zooms with Miss Gambino mostly because we get to share things with each other. Miss Gambino is very sweet and makes learning fun. I also like the novels we've been reading and studying. On Accelerate, the social studies has a lot of cool things and information, but that's mostly because I really like history. I like playing Dreambox, which is the math learning game Miss Gambino suggested. The math is just at my level. I really look forward to the clubs that we have. Most of my complaints come from Accelerate. I dread logging on every day. I don't like how on Accelerate there are so many spelling mistakes. I think I have found over twenty. I think it sets a bad example. Also, the videos are outdated and super annoying. Some of the videos are from when my mom was a kid. In social studies, one of the lessons was disturbing when describing what the people of Jamestown had to do when they ran out of food. Accelerate is very boring because you just read the information, take a quiz, read the information, take a quiz. I really wish that in science, every once in a while, we could do a fun experiment, sort of like what we could do if we weren't in a crisis. Something I really miss is free writing, drawing pictures and group projects. I think we should stop using Accelerate and I think a lot of other people feel the same way. It would make the school year for every remote student much better for us to learn. Sincerely, Maeve Westgate. So in terms of my opinion as a parent, I've heard a lot of things tonight about in-person learning, um, but very little about our fully remote students. Uh, the remote teachers have been fantastic in building relationships with students and creating a real community. Um, with that said, I wanted to know what is the thinking about improving the learning model for our remote-only learners? In particular, the Accelerate program, which is for elementary students, which is completely substandard for our students. Thank you.
Um, Tracy, thank you and thank your daughter for that, that those, that well-thought-out and well, um, crafted letter. Please, please send our appreciation to her. Um, the the reality at this point, like many things, is that we we look at the programs that we have and how can we, how can we continue to work to make them better, right? There there would not be any capacity at this point to, um, remove Accelerate and put some other program in. That was a, and again, that was vetted at the at the state level. We know, like, just about everything in this environment, things are imperfect. Um, and I think to your your point, the teachers are working really hard to try to adjust where, um, the program falls short and to build some of that more interaction with with students. Um, the the other thing that that is interesting and then let Ben, I'll let you jump in here is the apple coordinator, is that we we also get data that for some folks, like just about everything here, that for some families, the program actually works fairly well and then for other families, um, it it is not as well-received. And so what what we try to do is to address those areas that feel like the program is falling short. Um, knowing that that is not something that we are able to just completely throw out um, and and start with something totally new. So Ben, do you want to, um, just offer any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, um, I'm really glad that, um, we are building awesome relationships between students and between A P L staff. Um, when I think about what we're going to remember about this in ten years, it's those kinds of things. It's not lessons that would that 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 we're going through. Um, thinking about, um, the science piece, uh, we have two, um, A P L teacher workdays coming up, one, uh, next week and one in January. And that's a big piece of what we're looking into. Um, the the math and the and and the literacy seems to be going a little bit better. Um, the program is built on national standards, um, which are not exactly the same as the Massachusetts one. The math and literacy, um, are much more aligned um, with ours. The science and social studies are are not quite. Um, so what we're looking at, particularly with those, is are there things that we can take out? Um, and then put in, uh, local curriculum projects that have been developed to bring some of those projects back in. Um, think the the example that I keep using, and I say this as a former third-grade teacher, um, is all the colonial stuff that we do in third grade is obviously not in the national standards. Um, but it is hugely important to us, um, and something that I want all of our third graders to come out of third grade with. Um, when we, uh, fourth grade, one of the big, um, topics is the regions of of the United States. So making sure that we can grab some of those local projects that we've already designed, things we use every year and bring some of those things in, um, in the second semester. With the writing piece, um, I've heard from second and third grades, they've got a lot of writing going on that people are excited about. Um, and I know that, uh, there are some blogging going on in second through fifth. Um, so there is a push to try to get more of that writing, um, writing coming in that we're recognizing that as as a piece that we want our students to be doing more of. Um, and then blogging also allows them to be writing for each other, writing for a more authentic audience, um, and giving and receiving feedback, which which is an important piece of that. Um, is Accelerate perfect? No, it's not. Um, it was one of those things where we got, uh, into into August and districts across the state didn't have the capacity to evaluate everything that was out there. Um, and so the state came to us and said, here are two that we think are good. Um, and I looked at the two and Accelerate on the surface looked like the better of the two. Um, so when I hear folks that are frustrated, it hurts me a little bit because I'm like, oh, like that was the one that I thought was better. Um, and we are, we are continuing to to work with families, um, sort of as a as A P L as a group, but also with individual families to try to make it as successful as possible and make sure that kids are are in a good spot, uh, next year when we're done with all this and we can all come back together so that those students don't feel like they're coming back to a different place than our hybrid students.
So, um, we have reached, um, eight o'clock. Um, there was some sidebar chatting, um, which also could be seen by the participants that we might extend to eight thirty. Um, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people in the queue, so we have to be very efficient if we do that. Um, Mary Beth, can you put the Google form into the, um, chat for people also?
Yeah, I did put it in there once already, but let me just add it in a second.
Sorry, I didn't see you grab it. Um, so we're um, quickly, committee, if you could just say if you would be interested in continuing this part of the meeting till eight thirty.
Absolutely.
Yes, I would. I do want to stop at eight thirty.
Definitely.
Great, let's go. Um, that puts, uh, Jackie Marr.
Thank you. Um, my name is Jacqueline Marr. I live at one forty-two Railroad Avenue in Hamilton. Um, I am also a product of the Hamilton One M School System from kindergarten to the graduating class of ninety-seven. I teach at Miles River Middle School and my two daughters attend at Bueker School. So clearly I'm invested and love our community. Um, I have two points to make tonight and they are essentially comments to the community, not questions that require any response. I'm just hoping those here will listen. The argument around our pandemic education model has boiled down to, to me, an ugly point. What can we do to keep the kids in school, in a building, a structure? As a career educator, frankly, I find this repeated phrase insulting. The district we consistently compare ourselves to and frequently lose valued staff to is Manchester Essex. They have been fully remote all year and plan to start hybrid mid-January. What we all should be collaborating on is what does giving our students the best education possible look like during this difficult time? There is no way to have this conversation without the educators themselves. Teacher voice has been glaringly absent. These are the people that are in the buildings with our children. They are passionate, empathetic, dedicated and willing to evolve. They are passionate, empathetic, dedicated and willing to evolve because they are professionals. But asking them to evolve to fit a mold that they have no voice in shaping is asking for failure and further division. What do our kindergarten and first grade teachers think about the logistics of bringing full classes back four or five days a week? Are high school teachers still feeling, as some expressed in the union call, like the hybrid model gives them less meaningful face-to-face time than remote learning? I'm not sure of these answers because they are responses that only experienced educators at those grade levels can address. Being in a building does not make an education. And when the school committee voted on a hybrid model, Superintendent Banjo spoke candidly about toggling as needed. But when we did toggle, the reaction was righteous and angry, which leads me to my second point. A few months ago, as we prepared for hybrid learning, Principal Jen Clifford said something in a school committee meeting about approaching this new school year with grace. That specific word choice and author strategy I teach my students resonated with many and was repeated, but only for a short time. I love Hamilton Wenham, but I am not proud of how we are handling the pandemic as a community. Some may take pride in activism, but I wonder how many in our community can honestly say that they have participated in this activism with grace? For the most part, I have seen negativity, frustration, and most commonly accusations spilling in every direction of our small town streets. The way we treat each other during this time is a model for our children and evidence of our community's identity. As we simultaneously experience a peak of the pandemic and the holiday season, I implore the community to return to treating each other with grace, patience, kindness and a sincere desire to understand and support instead of blame and accuse. Thank you to all who are giving your time, the school committee, the COVID response team, my fellow parents turned educators and my colleagues. You have my gratitude and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marr. The next person to speak is Ann Brady. After Ann will be Tom.
Hi, um, okay, am I, is everybody hearing me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Ann Brady, 12 Gifford Road, South Hamilton, last name is B R A D Y. First of all, I want to just say Bravo, Jackie, beautifully said. I completely empathize with the difficulty and the amount of work that teachers are putting in to make this school year work for our students. As I am a high school special education teacher in another district. At Hamilton Wenham, I have a high school senior for whom school has always been a struggle. We made the decision to keep him remote due to underlying health issues and it has been a great disappointment. He is provided with plenty of work to do, but is being taught very little in many of his classes. He feels that he is teaching himself most of the material in most of his classes so far. Though there has been a teacher change for one of his classes recently, and that may lead to a big improvement for him. I would like to hear you address how you are looking at equity for remote only and hybrid students at the high school level. Something you promised us back in August. Time on learning is in fact, to my mind, lower in the hybrid model. And there seems to be no valid argument to me and to many others against including students more in classes via live streaming or via other means. Thank you.
Eric, do you want to speak to that?
Sure thing.
Would you like to speak to that and some of the work that is happening at the high school?
Sure, a couple of, three weeks ago now, we applied for a grant for, from the Ed Fund for all the equipment we need for, to outfit thirty classrooms with streaming equipment. The final pieces of that equipment came in yesterday. We started setting up a couple of units to, for teachers to test and learn how to use today with our tech staff and we'll start integrating that. We have a group of eight more teachers, it's currently seven or eight teachers that do it consistently. We have another group of eight teachers that'll go online first and then another group right after that. So this is rolling out now so that we can include all of our students in all of our times. So that when we're in hybrid, if you're in, give you an example, Monday during your A block class, that eighty-six minutes, if we were in a normal hybrid with no streaming, the, that class would happen twice a week. Once for the A cohort on Monday and once for the B cohort on Thursdays. Now we can just move on with the next class on Thursdays because we'll be able to live stream where we need to and bring kids right into classes instead of teaching the same class twice. We'll gain, we'll double our instruction time by using this method. There's a, there's probably about between twelve and fifteen teachers that are consistently streaming, mostly in the math and science departments. They use different levels of technology from iPad integration with their, with their Zoom and their laptops, but now we're moving towards hi-def cameras with microphones that can pick up conversations in the classroom and widescreen monitors so that kids that are being zoomed in, the teachers can see them while they're teaching a class. They can see them on the screen and it just gives us more flexibility to be able to bring more kids into the classroom.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Tom.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Tom Geary, T O M G E A R Y, forty-one Ortons Road. I'll try to be as quick as I can and my, my question is with the vaccine rolling out, you know, soonish, do we have any sort of criteria established that we will go back to full in-person? Is it fifty percent? Is it seventy percent? Do we have anything sort of planned out at this point that says that now is the safe point to bring kids back full-time?
Thank you, Tom. At this moment, given all the variables, we don't have a set list of kind of criteria that would need to be met. There, there are again, a wide range of factors. I anticipate as the vaccination starts to roll out, that those will be conversations that we will be having along with other districts and at the state level as we collectively learn how to get kids back in-person learning as quickly and as safely as possible.
So, I mean, is, is there a timeline for when those conversations will happen? Because obviously the vaccines are going to be coming out relatively soon. Teachers sadly weren't on the first, the first phase, the second phase. But it just seems like if we wait until several weeks, months, it's going to be too late at that point.
Yeah, I, I think, Tom, I would say you're right, this, this, I think it was this afternoon or this morning, the governor announced that teachers will be in the second round of vaccination. We are anticipating, as of a meeting I was in this afternoon, that, that we'll see these vaccinations somewhere in the February to April time period. Things again are volatile, so we're going to be continuing to watch that. In terms of focus, right now, our, our primary focus is how do we get these younger students into school? And we're, we're doing planning around that. And as we start to move further along in the process, I, that is something that we'll be, we will be looking at. But there are other more immediate needs that we need to put our focus on. But as that gets closer to being a reality, I, I am sure those are conversations we're going to be having.
I'm also thinking, Mary Beth, that as we get closer to that, that I would expect some guidance from CDC or the Mass Department of Health and that they, they might be in a better position to say, these are the conditions you need to start to bring people in than, than us.
Right, you know, and one of the things that we, we sit with and certainly something that has been a, a big issue here in Hamilton Wenham is that the, the, the community had the foresight to say, let's have some metrics in terms of at least framing in the, the guidance. And then we had one, so we were one of the first districts in the, the state to start to do that. And then state guidance came along and that, then trying to work through different levels of thinking. So I do agree, Ben, that we are going to see some level of guidance. And there, there will certainly be a time for that conversation. I just think that there are more pressing issues at the moment.
Great. The next person to speak is Pam Millman.
Hi. It's only fair I turn my camera on too, huh? Hi, thank you to everybody. I can't say that enough. I'm always saying that. You've seen me before. I'll say it a million times. It's never going to be enough. I'm going to say three succinct, I think, questions that I would like to be able to have responded to, maybe not now, but at some point, with some date certain to that. And given the information that's already been provided about the COVID response team and knowing that the people that are involved certainly can't provide confidential information about people, I, I would like and ask the school committee to revisit and rethink completely the makeup of the COVID response team from the outset. Of that there's a need to be one, certain, but we need to revisit what the makeup of it is. Currently, the makeup is, it appears to be union rep, union folks that have one interest, as we know by documents they signed on to the department of not, of not being interested in moving toward in-person schooling. Nurses for sure, but there may be some conflict of interest there of the depth and breadth that they're involved in. And perhaps has been stated before, parents could be on that team. So I'm asking this, the school committee to revisit the makeup of the COVID response team. In light of what was just said prior to me, by the speaker prior to me and Superintendent Banjo's, your, your response is, you know, we're not there yet about all in-person. I don't, I, I, I'm certain that we're not going to be there anytime very soon. However, where is the plan? We have all of these plans to toggle backwards, forwards into hybrid and all, but where is the plan to bring more kids in? A detailed, specific plan at each grade level to bring kids in? And if you can't respond now, I would hope that this is something that can be responded to soon. It is December. Many school districts around have had plans for a variety of these things that we're still thinking about and it is December. We started school on September seventeenth. We had ten, the school system had ten days to visit and think about all these plans. This pandemic has hit us all so incredibly hard that we've all had to be flexible. And we're all gracious to the hard work that everyone has done as a parent, as administrators, as building facilitators, the janitor, the, the custodial staff, for certain the school committee that's put in unbelievable amount of hours dealing with this. We just want to know that there's a plan and a plan that goes towards, and I saw that, Michelle, I got it, one more sentence. And a plan that goes to speak to remote for people that seem to be dissatisfied for, and for hybrids. There will currently always be an opportunity for remote, it seems. So there's no reason why there can't be a plan moving into the direction of more kids in when then they can choose also remote. Thank you.
Joy, you know, one of the, I, I know one of the requests there was for, for the school committee, you know, what, what I can share is that, you know, there, there are a lot of things that we are planning for right now along with the immediate issues of addressing the, the COVID needs and beginning with our younger students, planning to start streaming at the, at a higher level, at the secondary level. And then I, I also want to point out to the community that part of what we, we are, we are thinking about is that this will end, you know, and for the first time, I think we can see some light at the end of the tunnel. And we are also planning as the budget season starts and we are looking to how we start to deliver curriculum instruction and assessment structures that support all students in terms of, of learning, how we are building out an, an intervention system that, that is at a stronger level, particularly as we know that when we get all students back, we want to be, be really targeted in terms of our delivery. So there are a number of things that we are planning. And, and we, we, if you do everything, you do nothing well into a level that we, we feel like we can deliver programming that makes sense for our students. So Pamela, I hear your frustration around wanting lots of plans. And there are a lot of things that we are planning beyond just the COVID response. And budget is certainly significant as that is coming up. And that, so, one of the things that, that we learn is that circumstances are changing so quickly and so rapidly. Putting a lot of time in to be too far out oftentimes does not pay off in terms of a wise investment of focus.
We now have Kristen Proctor, right? Kristen Proctor, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
So that's Kristen with an I N, Proctor with an E R, eighteen Homestead Circle in Hamilton. I have a middle schooler and a fifth grader who would be at Cutler, but both of them are fully remote this year. I have a number of questions. I'm going to stick them in the Google form. I have one thing that I would really like to ask everybody tonight and that's to not forget our remote learners. It's frustrating when the only time there are social groups is when everyone's off. It feels like we're only important when everybody's remote. And the other thing I wanted to let everybody know is that there's a group of us that have been doing remote learning from the start and we are not withering orchids. Our kids are doing okay. They're actually learning a lot. And that's because we have incredibly talented teachers and educators who have really given so much of themselves in a year where, to be honest, pedagogy has not been a priority. And so I just want to draw on something that my kids learned at Cutler School, which is growth mindset. And if people could start framing it as the things that we could learn, the things that we're going to get better at, instead of saying that remote learning is the worst thing that could ever happen to kids. I know that it would be more true and, you know, there's a group of us that are actually doing okay. And I'd love you to think of us too sometimes and include us. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one last person. Kristen Crockett, she wants to speak. And then that is it for the queue.
Okay, Kristen Crockett, five Birch Road in Wenham. And I actually just have a very specific question related to what the school is doing in terms of the contact tracing. I understand I have to do contact tracing and provide information for that for my own job. And when the school nurse calls the classroom, I really would just like to know what, if any, processes are in place at the different grade levels for when that school nurse says, you know, somebody in this classroom has been positive. How are we documenting any close contacts from, if my kid takes the bus to school, goes to the classroom, goes to lunch, comes back? Is there a process for documenting those contacts or are we just calling and saying on last Tuesday, you know, what can you remember?
Hi, I can take that. And I realized my background is dying, so I'm sorry, it's the best I can do. I look like an invisible man. So what happens when we are, the nurses are alerted of, of a case? We begin sort of contact tracing in the school. And so what, you know, we talk to the, we do a few things first. We talk to the student to find out, or the staff to find out the activities. Well, we find out if they were even in the school during the exposure days. And we go through the whole day, okay? So if, if they were exposed at school, then we would, you know, talk to the teachers to find out where they're sitting. We would go to their lunch and see, you know, where they're sitting. We would definitely be calling the local board of health, okay? And then giving them that information so that they can do their job and give the guidance and do their content. and give the guidance and do their contact tracing with that case and then follow up with the contacts. If we have a case in school or contact, the administrators are sending out a notification to that individual school that there has been a case within the school community. And also we're sending letters to those contacts who have been exposed so that they can start the quarantine period. As a school nurse, we're documenting in the health portal. We use SNAP to do all our documentation. Anytime your kids come into the, to the health office, we're documenting in SNAP. We're documenting with their physicals and vaccinations. And there is, you know, we're documenting if they are close contact or their case and, and we're, you know, able to pull reports to make sure, you know, they're staying out of school, you know, during that quarantine or isolation period. And we're following up with the, with our students just because we're school nurses. So that's what we do. But the local board of health, they're going to do their job also and make sure, you know, they're doing their contact tracing based on the information that we get.
So I guess my question, I, just to clarify the question, like I understand from the board of health side and when you as a school nurse go in, my sister's an educator in Boston and does a sub separate preschool. So when she has to toilet one of the preschoolers, she fills out a form and documents that, I guess. So my question is not so much with the nurses, but in terms of if my kid's on the bus and she hops over to, you know, sit with her friend, you know, is there any process for that? Other than just relying on the students to say that they, you know, mine's always going to say they follow the rules. I don't think that they would always follow the rules, but they're going to say that they did because they don't want to get in trouble. Just, that was more my question in terms of the classrooms. How do we document that? Or is there a way to document that? I guess that was.
The classrooms, most of the teachers keep seating charts. In the high school with, at the, at the cafeteria, we are using QR codes. So when a student goes in and sits down, they have to sort of log in. So he, we have, we have that documented where they're sitting. And maybe Eric Tracy, you can just say, we have it, I think in the library, the QR codes in the library.
Yes, we use them in the caf and in the library.
Yeah. With the buses, I'll be honest, I, you know, the, there is a plan for the buses. And it is on our website in terms of how the students are to be sitting on the bus.
Can I jump in, Leah? I was just talking about buses. The seats are marked where students are able to sit. Bus drivers have various ways that they are keeping track. They are asking kids, as I see the kids get off in the morning, they're, they're asking them what number seat they were in and making sure they write down their names. So bus drivers have seating charts as well. And we also have bus rosters of each afternoon as we're putting kids onto buses. There's very few kids riding buses this year as compared to in the past. So we do have notes about who's riding buses each day as well.
I just will add to that. My kids are the two kids, the only two kids that are riding the buses. And that is absolutely completely true. So. And I will just add to that.
My son was signed up for the bus but has not ridden the bus until the last few weeks. And because he hadn't been on the bus before, they wouldn't let him on the bus until I called to make sure that they could notify him that he was the Owen Bailey that was on the bus. It's been pretty strict. Yeah. So we're doing.
And also if the board of health nurses find out there's a case or contact within the school community, they'll let the nurses, they'll, they'll let us know. So we're, we're constantly in contact with them. Obviously, Mary Beth Ting is the middle school nurse and the Wenham Public Health Nurse. So she's very much involved.
Super. Great. All right. So we are at eight thirty-four. We have, just to go through the school committee and sort of reflect on what we heard was our top one or two themes tonight so that we can think about what we heard to be the most important. We want to thank the now currently two hundred and thirteen, oh, two hundred and twelve people that were here tonight that joined us and shared their ideas and thoughts. I'm personally not seeing the Google form in the chat window, but people referred to it, so I'm assuming it is there. So if you, you know, it can be very intimidating to speak in front of a large group, even if it is just through Zoom and you felt that way. You can participate through the Google form. If you felt like, gee, the time is getting long and I don't want it to be longer and dropped off, we certainly appreciate that. I do see the Google form is now there. Feel free to use that. It's absolutely there for that purpose. I'm happy to start and then we can just go around. So that's.
Michelle, point of order. Do you have to lawfully open the meeting with a roll call of who's here?
We already opened the meeting at the beginning. What, you mean who's participating remotely?
Do we have to? I'm happy to go ahead if we don't. Just want to make sure we don't miss it. We have to do it.
Recorded. We should say that it's meeting and like, and that the people are participating remotely due to the governor's emergency, what is it called that?
Decree.
Decree, whatever.
Order.
Order. That's the word I was looking for. Order. Emergency order. Thank you. You read my mind already. That's.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we did it right.
I heard two things, two things I heard. One, people are concerned about staffing and our ability to stay open with that and that people are looking for more active learning or more contact time. That's the two things that I heard that were important to the community. Do we have volunteer who would like to go next? Peter.
Okay, of the two hundred and fifteen people listening, every single one of them knows what I'm about to say. Right? What I heard was more time on learning, greater, more effective, independent learning, greater equity. And what I've been asking for going back four years now, before any of this was even a, a thought. What I asked for back in March was a remote, a proper learning management system that can be used both in person, in hybrid and in remote. It would, it creates an individual education plan for every student because it recognizes, it's adaptive, it's intuitive. It's, it's, it can see what is the best learning style for every student and it directs that student down that path. So in all the formative assessments, it will say, well, you learn best in this mod, modality. So it'll direct you to a vet and it doesn't even pop you to another window. Within the window, it can say you struggled on this question. Go back and review this. And it creates that individual education plan for every student. So by the time they get to the summative assessment, they've already mastered it. It allows, administer, another thing that came up was progress. The question that Principal Clifford answered was that the teachers can see the product, the product, the process, the progress. But with a proper learning management system, an administration can see each student's progress, each class's progress, each cohort's progress, each grade's progress, each school's progress. They can, they can, we're a data, we're supposed to be a data-driven district. So a proper learning management system would handle that. It would reduce stress on teachers and students. It would create greater time on learning, more effective, independent learning and greater equity. And it's tied into our publishers, our publishers' content. And so the, the teachers would have twenty-four seven support in implementing this. It just frustrates me that all of these, a lot of these problems could have been solved if we had one of these proper, a proper learning management system. And I'd like it to be on, I've spoken to an international and national learning management expert again, and he's volunteered his time next Wednesday on the fourteenth to, to give us a presentation and answer our questions about it. So I'd like it to finally, after months and months of requesting that an item be added to our agenda, we put it on and invite everybody that's listening to join us next week to see what we're missing out on. Thank you.
Michelle Horgan?
Thank you. Again, Mary Beth said earlier that every situation here is so complex. But I really think we need to look at the remote learners. And I know we're a work in progress, but we heard it both at the elementary and secondary level. With the help of the Ed Fund, we are closing that gap at the high school level, but I think we need to, if there's any capacity, which I know that's a pipe dream, but I really think we need to look at them again and just see what we can do to better serve, or not even better serve, to, to bolster and just to, as always, improve in a crazy world that we're in. And the other one is another tough call is the COVID response team. And we've had this discussion. There's privacy issues. We have a great team in place. Dana does represent the parent because she is a parent and a school committee member. But maybe thinking of just another avenue to get without making it muddle, muddying the waters, just to try and get another component in. But as Mary Beth said, which parent concerns you put on? There's, there's a multitude of concerns out there. So I think we, maybe as a team, COVID team, you know, you can take a look at that. Don't spend a lot of time on it, but just enough to maybe grab some ideas from the, the response team and see what you can do. Thank you.
Anna, you're the next hand I saw.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. So the things that are jumping out to me, I think there's a couple of them and like everything, they're in conflict. So one of the things that Ms. Maher spoke to is sort of the voice of the teachers. And I feel like that has definitely been lacking in terms of our decision-making about the plan itself. I think for me, I'm really struggling with the fact that we have competing truths. So I'm a remote parent and I really validate what Kristen Proctor said about remote learners. My family is doing great, but we are in a silo. That is true. However, what I'm really bothered by in, and this is maybe global, is I don't get any sense of urgency about making changes. There's a lot of, we're going to plan, we're going to unpack, we've worked on it, we've thought about it. I think the thing that's really jumping out to me, and Ms. Maher just talked about this, you know, we have parents who are legitimately angry and frustrated. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's our place to judge whether or not they should be. I think it's a truth, like they just are. And so what I'm trying to struggle with is the fact that we've had all this time to think about things and plan things. And in the beginning, we didn't really know what to expect. And now we do. And it is legitimately frustrating to look at other districts around us who have done things differently, who legitimately have three or four times the amount of synchronous instruction, whether that's in person because they're at less than six feet. And they haven't, they have not fallen apart. And I think that that's really hard for me to look away from the fact that a district like Beverly has been at a lesser distance. I am a teacher, I might even say I'm a teacher loyalist. I come from a family of teachers. There has to be some thought about how do we balance the six feet and the teachers and the safety and the reality, like the facts that are looking at us that other districts are closer. So that's one major concern is that I don't think we have enough time on learning. I've, I've said that from the beginning. And I think in the beginning, it was hypothetical. And I think now it's actual, like it's measurable. We can measure the days in person and the days of synchronous instruction and they don't add up. So the lack of urgency is a real theme for me. These parents are frustrated that we're not doing enough and that we're waiting. So that's, and I think, I, I think our trust is totally broken. And I think the reason that Ms. Maher touched on why people are so angry, we don't trust each other anymore. You know, there's mistrust of the COVID response team from the public. There's mistrust from the committee to unto itself. There's mistrust from the committee to the superintendent. I also think there's mistrust from the teachers to the administrators. And it's really interesting that when the teachers had a chance to have a panel in the beginning, they said things that contradicted what the administration was saying. So if you add all that together, that's a hot mess of mistrust. And I think that's why people are angry. But I think the sense of urgency is missing. So I have a couple very particular, specific questions, mostly for the elementary principals that I'd like, since we have them here, I want to take advantage of their knowledge. I would like to know what the distance we would need to negotiate with the union would be to bring all of K through five back in the building. I would like, to me, that's an answer. I want somebody to do the math and tell me what footage we need to get to to get K through five back in person.
I think Tom provided that earlier, but he might still have that.
It's about four feet.
I'd have to research it, to be honest. Every space is a difference. Every classroom has different square footage, right?
But on, on average, Ben, did you say it's about four feet?
It's about four feet. Yeah.
Okay.
So knowing, knowing my class sizes in my classroom, like, like my, my numbers of kids in classes and the physical size of my classroom, which is not vastly different from the other two schools, I mean, dropping down to four feet.
Would that be assuming constant enrollment, Ben?
Yes, yes. If we went, if we went to bringing everybody back and there were remote students who then came back because we offered something more consistent, then we might have to go below four. Yeah.
I also think that there's going to be some inconsistencies. I have some grade levels where there are only going to be thirteen kids bringing both cohorts back. And then my first grades are my biggest classes and there are going to be twenty when we bring them back. So.
So that gets to my exact next question. Carolyn, you're a mind reader. Well done. Which is, I think that across the elementary levels, there are pockets where you could bring everyone back and have six feet, and there are pockets that are not. So like you just said, I know, you know, Winthrop has a bubble. I know the Cutler third grade is a bubble. I think Winthrop fifth grade is a bubble. One of the things I would like to see done by our administrative team is to actually get more specific and say, what classes could we bring back at what distance? And then where there are those bubbles, say, could you use the cafeteria for instruction and split apart? Could you use the gym and split apart? One of the things that I think I'd like to see, and I think the public would like to see, is a little more creativity and troubleshooting for those elementary grades. Because that's where we're suffering. And I had a long conversation with a friend in Topsfield today about their model and how they're team teaching. And they have a collaborative model with two teachers in a bigger space and then they divide. And I think one of the parents talked about, you know, what can parents do in the subbing? I, I think we need to really look harder at the elementary kids sooner than February and more than K through one because we're just, we're, we're behind every district around us. And it's to me at this point kind of unconscionable, but I don't want to do that without being real about distance and teachers, which is why I wrote about testing, you know? If we're going to do that, we need to have, we need to have more assurances about safety. So that to me is a major concern. And then one of the things that Eric touched on as well, that I think, Mr. Tracy, you said that the high school right now is fully remote voluntarily at twenty percent. Is that right?
Said we're closing in on twenty percent. So about eighteen and some change.
So that's, you know, that's something I've brought up before is looking at equity of instruction at the high school level. And I think that Ann Brady talked about that for high school remote learners is at the high school level, where are they getting the most content? So it's interesting to me that if our high school is already voluntarily at twenty percent, what does that say about the high school learning model and those needs? But I also think, you know, and I asked this, I think, last week during the meeting with Mr. Huby, the distancing to me is like the linchpin, right? If we can move away from six feet, a lot of things change for us. I think we have to consider that in light of what's going on around us and in light of access to testing and knowledge of protocols and how strict the schools are. I mean, it just, I think we have to revisit that because that decision was made at a different point in time. So to me, that's like step number one. And then depending on the outcome of that conversation, it sounds to me like there are pockets we could bring everyone back across the board. There are pockets we could bring people back at six feet. I want to see this district spend a little bit more time really thinking about that and sooner than later. So I think if we, so to close out my thought, I think that if we spend a little more time publicly doing that, we would rebuild trust and transparency in our capacity and our functioning. And I think that would help the parents. And then I would love to see more of a voice of the teachers. I had a question for the union leadership about the calendar. It's frustrating to me as a school committee member that I can't really talk directly to the teachers and know. And I said from the beginning, I know that our teachers could do anything. And if, to be honest, every time a teacher speaks or every time I watch them, I am blown away. I think the teachers of this district could build a car and duct tape if you ask them. Like, I think they could do anything. I somewhat feel like I want to hear more from them directly. I want to give them more power. I want to have more access to them. I think that would help rebuild everyone's trust and competence because our, our district right now, I, if I were to grade it, depending on who you ask, some people love it, you know? Some people are having a great year and that's their. Some people are having a great year, and that's their truth. And other people's children are literally falling apart, and that is also a truth. And I think right now, we're missing the mark kind of in both camps. And I know we can do better because we have incredible teachers. And I want to hear more from them, and I want to work harder on this. That's all I'll say for now.
And in terms of using those larger spaces, if we bring in K and one full time, at least at Bucker, I, my larger spaces are used up. The only two spaces that I have that are larger than a classroom are the cafeteria and the gym in both of those would need to be used by kindergarten. In terms of transparency, and talking about six feet, when elementary presented a few weeks ago, I had a few slides where I talked about what a classroom looks like at, at, you know, more and more packed in, it's shorter and shorter. And the comments from the school committee at the end of that were, we don't want to bring anybody back at less than six feet. And so if we are, if, if there is a shift, I would, I think that we owe it to the community to talk about why that shift is there.
I, I think it's worth a question. And again, I also think we owe it to the teachers to hear from them. But if, if every district, the entire state was at six feet, and that was like a firm rule, I would feel differently. I'm troubled by the fact that other districts are not doing that. And they have been operational, and this is a point the parents have made, is that other districts nearby who have higher COVID numbers have been at less than six feet, and they have been operational. And that is a, that's a salty point with parents, you know? And I, I have a hard time ignoring it. I think that's the truth. And I do have thoughts about the COVID response team. I sort of echo, we need to rebuild the trust in that process somehow, whether by making it more public, more publicly accessible, adding more parents to it. I think the quick decisions of the COVID response team, the public doesn't, the public either doesn't understand or they do understand perfectly, but they don't trust what's happening there. Somehow we have to rebuild the trust because that's where the anger is coming from. It's coming from a place of mistrust. And I think we should think about the composition of that team, the accessibility. Maybe it doesn't become a public body, because I know that has some issues, but we could also make it more public. You know, you could post the link to the meetings. Maybe you could invite parents in, like, I would like the committee to think about restructuring that team event because the public has lost confidence in it, and that's a really worrisome development.
If I could just make one, one brief comment, because I, I, I worry about this, some of the things you're saying, Ann, about teachers not having voices. Part of the reason that the processing takes a while to make sure that we're putting things in place that makes sense is because our, our leadership team is constantly consulting with teachers about what can work and what cannot. So I, I really need to push back on this perception that in our decision making and as we think about how we move forward, that we are not working very closely in collaboration with teachers and consulting with them. And I, I want to be really clear for the community and for the committee that, that I would echo that sentiment, that they have a, a lot of boots-on-the-ground knowledge. They know how a lot of things work. And that part of what makes change more complex is the fact that we pull in all these groups and we get their perspectives, and they, we honor what it is that they are thinking and giving us in terms of feedback. And I just want to put that out there.
And you also, Mary Beth, have your teacher advisory committee. But there's a group representative from all five schools to have direct access to you on a regular basis.
That's correct.
Julia?
Hi. So I, I heard five things tonight, and you can, you can do with it what you will. The five things that I heard, one, more people want their voices at the table, specifically parents. So whether or not they do have their voices at the table, they feel that they don't. So whether that be putting, whether or not we can put a parent on the COVID response team or have an advisory board, however that would work, that was one of the things that I heard, is that people want their voices at the table, specifically parents. Number two, parents really want to be informed about how the sausage is made. And I know that we can't do a lot of that with HIPAA regulations and privacy regulations. But they really want more transparency and accessibility. They want a timeframe for responses. They want to know sort of what to expect when they email, when they call, when they write in, and they, and they really want to be informed of how decisions, how decisions are made and how they can get responses to their inquiries. Number three, they want to see our vision, and this is a little bit more complicated, for every student. But I, I do think that's what we're tasked with as a school committee. They want to see our vision, not just for like the one size fits all, because I know, they all know there's no one size fits all, and we keep saying there's no one size fits all. But what is our vision for each grade and each student? And what is our vision for the middle school and the high school? And the way I see it is, how can we create a vision almost like Massachusetts did with the phase two, phase three, phase four? If we reach these milestones, then we will do this. If we reach these milestones, then we will do this. And I know there's no perfect solution. There's no one size fits all, and I understand that. I just get a sense from parents that they're frustrated because they don't want perfection, they just want progress. And number four is, there, people are very frustrated in, this is what I heard today, where do we stack up? And I know Anna said this, the rationale. I, I would love to hear, and I know the parents would like to hear, what's different? What are the complex factors? What makes us unique? What makes us special? Maybe more transparency about why other districts are doing this and why we can't do it or why we can do it, or what our, our plans are for doing this. I just think the transparency, it might be more than maybe we're comfortable with. But that's the frustration that I am seeing from the parents. And number five is equity for the fully remote students. And I completely understand that because I have hybrid students and I am fully, you know, I'm not going to put my kids fully remote. But I would love to see more, I would love to see the, the erosion of the division between the fully remote parents, the fully remote students, and the hybrid parents and the hybrid families. So maybe if there's some advisory committee, I don't necessarily have the solutions. I don't want to say I have the solutions, but I'm just saying what I heard tonight. Those are the five, pretty much the five points that I heard tonight.
David and Dana, would you like to arm wrestle for it? I'll let you go, David.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm really happy we finally got this on the table and out there today, right? I think that it probably should have happened about six weeks ago, and then again tonight, and it should probably happen again in about six weeks. And I think the one thing that sort of gets overlooked here is, you know, there is no constants here. There, there's nothing but more variables getting thrown at us, right? And so you're trying to create this system, and you're trying to improve this system, but everything around us keeps changing. Excuse me. I'm sure everyone in this leadership team and every teacher, you know, watching at home will tell you that, you know, as we were in hybrid, they started realizing what wasn't working and how to make, or I'm sorry, how to make it better, not necessarily wasn't working, but wasn't work up to their standards, and wanted to increase that, and then we had to move to remote. And that's going to continue to happen, you know? Trying to make a plan on how we can all get back into school, because vaccines are coming out. There's a three-month window on when teachers are going to get vaccines. So, and there's a big difference about trying to get kids back to school if we get vaccines in February as versus if we get them in April, right? And, you know, trying to do all of this is, you know, to, 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 I keep going back to, you know, what Ben said last year, is building the airplane as we're flying it. You know, everyone in this call wants all of our students back in the building. Everyone in this call wants the greatness that is Hamilton One M Education, right? To be there, and we're working, you know, our butts off to try and do that. There's one hundred eighty-two people still in this meeting, and there's a hundred eighty-two people who have an idea of how to do it best, right? And, you know, I know, being on the school committee for many years, I am privy to information that most people don't have, but I don't have all the information. And I don't need it. I can't, you know, possibly try to tell everyone in here how I think they should run the schools, individual schools, right, at three different levels, because I don't have all the information I need to make those decisions, right? So it's really short sighted for people to try and say, well, why don't we just do this? Because if you have the question in your head, I guarantee you it was asked at a meeting, right? I, I, and if it isn't, and it comes up in one of our meetings, right? This is why I want us to have these meetings, because maybe, just maybe, there is a question that we haven't thought of yet. And this is the perfect opportunity to bring that up. Excuse me. I want the dialogue back and forth because I understand how complex the problem is, right? Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to appease everybody now. And I understand what's at stake, you know? But the standards for safety can't be compromised just as much as our standards for our educational output can't be compromised, right? And at times during this pandemic, they're warring factions, right? That they really are. And that's something that I just think everybody needs to sort of keep in mind as we move forward. Excuse me. Again, I'm really grateful this happened. I got a lot of, heard a lot of great things from, you know, concerned community members and parents and students. And I heard a lot of great responses that made me very happy for our leadership team. So really, that's all I had to say, right? You know, I, I wish, I wish there was an easy answer. Excuse me, but I really appreciate the fact that you guys are all on my team trying to find that answer.
Great, David. Dana?
So I wish that I had gone first, because David, that was beautiful, and it was a beautiful wrap up. And so I wish that you had been the final word. So I want to echo a lot of what you just said. That was, I think, what needed to be said. I think just going last, I don't, it's, I don't know how much of what I have written down is necessary to repeat. But I think people, people want to feel heard. I think that is clear, and that's always true. I think both David and Julia mentioned this, but I see it a lot. I get a lot being on the COVID response team in addition to the school committee. People want, I think Julia used the word milestones, but I think people want some, we all want it. I know I've said this before. I wish it was true. It's why the state has that map with all the colors on it, because we all wish that it were that clear. And I, I, I think, and I, and I think it was, Julia said the same thing, that we all want to be able to say, you know, this is what's going to happen on this day, and this is the plan for the rest of the year, and this is the vision. And it's, it's frustrating that we, that, you know, we just, this pandemic throws us a lot of curves. It's been, it's difficult, because I wish that we could have more of that vision also. Anyway, I don't want to be bleak, but I, anyway, so I do hear the need that people really want clarity around how things are moving and how things are, when something is going to change, how it's going to change. I also heard, I think pretty clearly, there's a lot of, I think all of us have said this, for more in-person learning time, I think people are really asking for that. And then the idea of equity across modalities, age groups, classrooms. I hear a real demand for that. Anyway.
Do you feel like you have a good summary of that? Is there anyone on the leadership team that wanted to reflect on anything that they heard?
It's definitely not a requirement. Maybe just really quickly, Michelle, is that, you know, all of these things are, are so true, you know? And a, a lot to be thinking about. And, you know, what we want to be able to do is to prioritize the really critical elements. We will continue to think about ways in which we can share how decisions are made. And, you know, that's certainly something that I took away, is how can we continue to offer as much clarity as we possibly can in, in situations that are often unclear and messy? And how do you get those really complicated messages across in a way that, that can make sense to people when it, it's very, very, again, messy? But that's something, you know, I know all of us have been thinking about and working on in terms of our, our communications, sharing out with people the, the different issues that we're working on and trying to be, like, like I said, the snow day is a good example of being, trying to be proactive and getting that communication out before the snow flies. But we hear that, you know, and, and people need information in this moment of uncertainty. We know they're looking for clarity, and there are days that we're looking for clarity. And that is something that we are constantly striving to do.
Right. Michelle, I have, I, I do have a question before we go, before we break up.
Can we let the people who are here that need to send to our children go? We know that the time that you're not in the building is used to rejuvenate so that you can be the best selves that you can be in the next day. And we appreciate, like, nine o'clock at night, you've given up pretty much a lot of that time. And we, you know, and you've been here well beyond the time that we would have expected you to stay. So you're welcome to leave if you would like. And we appreciate the effort you made tonight and the effort you will make tomorrow.
Thank you.
Quickly, Anna?
So I guess my question is really about concrete next steps. We all just, we all just said a lot and heard a lot and talked about a lot. But I do think we need to give the public some sort of, something concrete to say, you know? When, I think David brought up a good point about having these meetings more regularly. I think the public is aware it was a struggle to get to this conversation. My question to the group is, when will we have a sense of renegotiating distance? When will we have a, a sense of what we're going to do about the COVID response team? Like, right now, I feel like there's a lot of ideas thrown up in the air. I do not have any sense of when we're going to come back and revisit this. Is it going to be during the superintendent's report at every school committee meeting? Are we going to have to have a special meeting every six weeks? Is there going to be another panel? Like, I, I want to give our public something concrete that we can actually say. And as much as I'm sensitive to the difficulty, again, other districts are doing this differently. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel, and I want to see us try a little bit harder. So what's our next step here? When are we going to talk about this again? What's, what's our move here? Because I think we need to put something in the ground that gives people a sense of direction so they can start to plan and think. And I think we need to show them some responsiveness, to be honest.
Mary Beth, is it, is it out of the realm of your reality to incorporate some of this or, or break it down into parts into your superintendent's report at our school committee meetings? Is that something that's doable?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that would be helpful for me is to get a sense of priorities, right? Like, there are many, many things that have been discussed this evening, all valid. You know, we would, I think all of us would say the system is imperfect, right? We know that as we try to cope our way through. And, and the priorities that we are working on right now, again, are getting K one back, building up the Wednesday day at the secondary level to give those students that are having the most difficult time more in-person learning and building up the streaming system. So one of the, so do you want to have, you know, we, I can talk with the COVID response team about what, what, what might that look like in terms of a, an additional member? Is that something that you want to prioritize? But what, what I need is some clarity along with those, those three pieces. Let's say maybe one or two more that you would like us to... Let's say maybe one or two more that you would like us to report out on and look, look to. But again, there have been a lot of really helpful ideas discussed. But, but we can't take them all on. So if you, if, if the committee can say, these are a couple of things that we'd like to hear about in the superintendent's report, I'm happy to, you know, we can certainly look.
I, I personally want to hear about more than K one. I mean, I think that's an obvious next thing to put a little more effort on. And I'm not, I'm not entirely comfortable with the decision that that's the only priority. I feel like that was made by the administrative team without the school committee's input. And I think that that concerns me. So I, I want us to talk about how we can do more for our elementary kids. Not necessarily at the expense of any other group like the high school. But I think those elementary kids need, need more. And I don't hear us talking about that. And I feel like you've made that decision somehow or another without our buy-in. And I don't know what to do with that, but that's something that bothers me. It really does.
So we want to put that on the agenda for next week? Is that what? Like, just sort of a discussing the priorities for you, Mary Beth? Like, you could come back with just an update and then we would put together a list and just discuss those priorities or?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll tell you where I'm coming from. And, and this might help. There was a lot that went on today. And, and I think that, I know for myself, and and, and I would imagine for the, you know, leadership team here, that you're going to take this home, where you're going to think about it, and you're going to stew. And there's going to be a couple of things that really sort of stick out in your mind. That you're here, that you heard, or that you're hearing in a new light, or that you're hearing, you know, for the first time, that you know, you're going to start, you're going to bump up your list. And um, and, and if that's the case, I think that tonight is very successful. Um, but going ahead, I, I'm nervous to say to bring on any sort of personal agenda right now. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself only, obviously. Um, but I mean, I, I think that, you know, we've heard that, you know, from these elementary parents and whatnot, that, you know, we like the idea that K through one is being thought of now. Um, but can, can we sort of widen that timeline a little? See, okay, what comes after K through one? Because I got very nervous when Ben responded to, and I don't think he's here to sort of uh, say, but when Ben responded to Anna about kindergarten, taking up the two large spaces, you know, Bueker's but what that means for the other classes, right? And, and, and if we're already talking about that, if there's a bubble, I mean, I I, I think that conversation is happening. But like, maybe if we do see sort of, like some sort of timing, um, because I would have to imagine that it's already in the conversation or it's about to be. You know, because I, I, at the end of the day, I think that everyone in this district does want to try and get every student back in here. And I, I think that, I think what everyone sort of wants to hear is, well, right now, what are you thinking? You know, even if it's like, once in a blue moon, what is that then? You know, we can do Y in February, that type of thing, right? And just really, like I said, with all these variables, I can't imagine that anything would be concrete. But I think it would do a lot of good if from nothing, if for nothing else but PR perspective. That just to show that, you know, hey, we are thinking about this and it's here. It's just, there's too many variables to give you anything solid. Does that sound kind of good to you, Anna, or?
Well, I, I, I mean, the thing, um, short answer, I guess, would say, no, not because I don't think that you're, you know, not phrasing it well. I think that the public is done with the time to think. I think people want some action. And I think it's really hard to talk, uh, talk about it, maybe this, if that, again, it's now December, and I think for the people who want more in-person, they've been wanting it for a very long time, and other people have it, and now we're still, it just feels like we're like the caboose on the end of the train and we're getting farther from how like the cars are going. And then I do want to touch about the full remote, you know? I'm a full remote parent. Um, I don't know if Craig Hovey is still on this call or not, but early on, I wrote a pretty firm email from my parent hat talking about the siloing and othering of the remote parent. So I mean, I kind of feel like, to me, I just feel like that's not enough because the people who want in-person profoundly want it and they want it sooner. And we, I just think we need to move faster. And then for the people that are remote, whether it's high school, whose kids are not getting enough content, or elementary and middle, whose kids are made to feel honestly like third-class citizens, if not for the amazingness of the individual teachers who are saving their year, you know? I just feel like, I think, I don't know, I think we need something more concrete um, sooner than a promise of, we're going to think on it and we'll get back to you. And maybe in February, we might try something. I don't think that's satisfying to people. I mean, I just, I, I think that's, I think we need to do something sooner. Whether that's a regular update from the superintendent, a revisiting of priorities, um, a commitment to some sort of more complete plan. And again, I, I value the teachers, but somebody has to ask the question about the six foot. We really do. Like, that has to be a conversation to be had. And we need to move forward from that because I, 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 I think that's a huge part of it. Um, and as I said to Mary Beth, if we're going to talk about lowering distance, I think we need to talk about community compliance and spread and widespread testing, you know? If we're going to do that, we have to do it together. But right now, we, right now, we don't even have a date yet to say, when are we going to go to the union even ask about it? It's like this idea in the wind that's, now I don't know where it is. We've got to have a plan. We, we, the school committee, the school committee needs to have a plan to be accountable to the public, you know, let alone the superintendent accountable to us. I, I feel like we need to demonstrate a plan to them. So I would, I personally would like more regular updates. I would like us to hit the ground running in January after the break with a better sense of what our models look like, what we're in them, and how we're going to make it better. And I think we need to roll that out to the public. So I think that probably to me starts with talking to the teachers, hearing more from them. Mary Beth, I, I hear your point about the teachers, and yet it's troubling to me that we never really hear from them, you know, like, I, I just, I want to hear more of their voices. And, um, so I feel like I want to see some sort of proposal for when we're going to have a major shift in the plan, whether that's all K through one, K through five. What's the barrier? What did the teachers even say? How are we going to support people? How are we going to make the remote people feel like they're not left out of this district? I, I just, my proposal, I guess.
Close the distance.
Yeah.
If we close the distance in the classrooms and bring everyone back, would, would that be removing everyone from remote as well?
Well, I think that would depend on the fact, I, I don't know. I think you have to see, I mean, I think some families, um, you have to look at why they're remote. And again, one of the things that troubles me is that, uh, we do have a bit of a one-size-fits-all. I think students at the high school level who might be voluntarily going remote are doing so for different reasons. I think there are families who are full remote right now, um, would feel, you know, some people are, are committed to it no matter what. But that may not be true for everyone. So, I mean, I, I think that's a question to be had about that. But I, I feel like, um, I wouldn't make that assumption that full remote will come back. I think the people that are full remote now would be inclined to stay remote. If the distance got shorter, if anything, you might have more people opt out, you know, like that to me would be probably the opposite direction. But
And, and, and you don't see that as a problem in creating the timeline?
I don't, because right now I don't even see we have a timeline to have a conversation. You know, we've, we've started it tonight, thankfully, but what's the next step? Like, I would like to.
No, I.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think that, I, I think I, I sort of beg to differ with that. I think the timeline conversation is happening.
Yeah, I think it started.
And, and I think that what needs to happen is it starts sort of being brought out a little bit more. Um, and I think it, you know, shows that it's been happening by the thought of the K through one. And it's not like they're keeping K through one in a, you know, thinking about it in a silo, right? So it's obviously in conjunction of what this means on the elementary schools as a whole. Right? And, and it's taking all of those factors in. Right? So to just sort of push this plan that, well, now we want to know what everything is going to look like moving back in. With everyone moving back in and shortening the distance, but I'm still going to keep my kids remote. You know, that, that, that's, that's a, that's something I'm not very comfortable.
Well, I think it depends on why people are remote, you know? I mean, again.
Why can't we do a survey? Like, you know what I mean? At the start of the year, I feel like there was a survey where it said, do you want to go hybrid? Do you not want to go hybrid? If it was six feet, if it wasn't six feet? So I think it's an imperfect system that we are living in. But also, we could ask people, if we were to move to four feet or five feet, would you be comfortable sending your kids? Maybe.
Well, and I, I mean, I think, one, I think there's survey fatigue. I think the other thing that I didn't raise up um, yet is the question about lunch, you know, the schedule. I mean, one of the things that districts are doing to make it safer at a shorter distance is to forget about lunch. And I know I've really stunned that because that's really when things are riskier. So I think, I think to me, we've got a couple of different levers that we could pull. And I would like us to talk about like, okay, so if we went less distance, what would that mean for teachers and students and families? If we got rid of lunch, would that make it safer? Would that change people's comfort level? Um, I see a comment in the chat here about, you know, someone who's comfortable with hybrid, but not full-time. You know, there might be some people who actually really like what we're doing and are happy. But that's not the sense I'm getting from the community, you know, like, I feel like we're more, and again, you know, you're going to hear from people who are unhappy. So, but I think to me, the fact that we have so many families who are unhappy about one thing or another says to me, we have problems in multiple places. And, um, I, I think we need to start that process. So yeah, David, I think the timeline to me is, is look at distance, look at schedule. Um, talk to the teachers about what's really viable. Talk with those principals, like Carolyn was sharing, like, where are the pockets? You know, you might be able to do something here. Can we get more creative with the schedule? I just, I don't feel like I, as a committee member, have access to that information, and I don't think we've been part of that conversation. So whether that means that Mary Beth starts to bring that in in her superintendent's updates, like, this is where we are. This is where we're thinking. And then somehow we need to, to move forward on some of these other questions that will involve the union on some level and recognize that, um, uh, we're partners. You know, I said this in the beginning, this district requires our teachers to make it work. I think my first sentence was, without our teachers on board, we don't have a plan. So we have to make sure that we're all in it together, but right now we're just all suffering. And I would like to see regular updates and I'd like to see a timeline of how we would get from A to B mapped out. And I'm hopeful that Mary Beth can do that with the leadership team, with the teachers and say, this is what, I mean, sort of like a, a redux of, of what we did before, like, if we were to do this, this is what it would take, this is the timeline. If we were to do, you know, if we were to go less than six feet, this is what it would look like. If we were going to hold six feet and change the schedule, this is what it will look like. If we were going to hold six feet and do something different with the high school, or, you know, I, I kind of feel like I want us to redo some of that planning, or at least revisit the planning and present ourselves with some options so that we can be responsive to the public.
I was gonna say, can we give Dana a chance to talk, but she's been patiently raising her hand?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Thank you. I, I, I have, and then I kept putting my hand down because I, this feels like a, I mean, I feel like I, um, have agreed with a, a lot of David, what you have said. I feel like I, I feel like that there, I'm hearing that there is a a timeframe that they, I heard about the K one is of, I think David just said this, it is a starting point. It's not the end-all. It's not, we're going to bring in K one and that's the only thing we're going to do. Correct, Mary Beth? That's?
That's correct. And part, you know, part of what we anticipate as, as we bring in K one, we will learn from that, right? What, what happens when you bring a full class in, in this type of environment? What are the obstacles that, um, are there? What are, what are some strategies that are working really well? So as we learn from that, we know that the next round of bringing students in is going to be more complicated because we will not be able to hold to the six-foot distancing. So let's first bring in full classes in six-foot, um, social distancing. Let's figure out what works well, where are the challenges, and then we will look at the next step. What is also, what will also happen during that time is there'll be time for the kind of vaccination timeframe and planning to roll out. Um, that, that we will hopefully start to get a little bit further through these really challenging, difficult months. Where we see escalated rates. Um, and so getting that right first and learning from that, and then being able to say, once, once we have that, and then looking at, there are some things here that are, are not within our ability to predict, right? There, there are some things that are happening right now that, that vary from day to day. Um, so right now, what we're looking at is through that Ja- January timeframe. Um, what are the critical things that we can get done? And what I, what I can certainly provide to the committee is in the superintendent's update are here, that here's what we're working on right now in order to, um, move to the, the next step. Right? Um, so I'm, I'm happy to share with you where that, where that is. That was the intent of the elementary and secondary updates, where we shared with you our thinking, what we were learning, what we thought was possible. Um, and, and, um, and ask for feedback around where, where, where that is happening. Um, so we're moving forward with that. Um, can keep you updated. It's a really good question about, okay, once you get K one, how do we get two, three? And do you do two through five? That's the next question we have to tackle. You know, what about middle school, right? Is there, is there a way to do that? But we know of all the buildings, that has the, the biggest challenge in terms of social distancing. And right now, they're focused on trying to get that streaming working really well. Um, but what I can certainly commit to is in the superintendent's report, giving you an ongoing update as to where we are in our planning, so that you know where that is. Um, and, 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 you know, ensuring that you have a sense of where we're headed, even though we may not be able to give you very specific timelines because we are living in a fairly volatile situation right now. Um, but we can give you a general map forward, and that may change, you know, as we learn things. You know, one of the conversations that we've had here is, well, our original plan said that, this, but then you did that. Right? Because we learned something, right? And we, you know, that didn't quite work. I think we can do it better this way. And then we check in with our families. Did it get better for you or not? Um, and so I envision bringing kids back following a very, very similar pattern. Um, but again, happy in the superintendent's report to continue to give you an update as to where, where we are and where we think the next steps are beyond this initial focus in K one to start moving us to these back.
Mary Beth, I have a really quick question. So when we're talking about learning.
Think we're going to see if the committee is ready to adjourn or if they're. Um, so if you just, this is not an official vote, but if you are, would like to continue, raise your hand. Great, go ahead.
Okay, so in terms of, um, studying and sort of thinking, you talked about K one and how that's going to go, and then the next step. Um, is there any sense that we could learn from what other people around us are doing? I, I, I have a little bit of a hard time sort of being like, why, it feels, again, I think I'm revealing myself to be a really impatient person. So this is perhaps a character flaw on my part. But I feel like it seems like we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to, like, it just feels really slow. So I guess my question to you is, can we learn something from our neighbors that could help us expedite that process? And then the other question, which, um, you know, has been raised by people, that I think looking at the importance of elementary and then the fact that we're investing in streaming at the higher levels and what that means for remote learning. And, you know, again, coming back to sort of the science is, we know, at least we think we know, that transmission is less among, you know, ages ten and lower. And it's more of a risk for older kids. Like, I do think the fact that it's possible that what's best for learning, I think Ms. Mar put it well. Um, and I, I see a comment in the chat as well from this, that, you know, we have to think about what's best for each level. Um, so there's that. The other question which we haven't answered is, when will we talk about any structural changes to the COVID response team? How can that get on the agenda?
Dana?
So, um, I just, I sort of got cut off before. But I, I just wanted to say two things. I do want to address the COVID response team. Um, I think this is just my opinion. But, um, I think that unfortunately, there has been an almost universal miss- opinion, but um, I think that unfortunately, there has been an almost universal misunderstanding of what the COVID response team is and does. Um, including, I think, a misunderstanding or I shouldn't say misunderstanding, a difference of opinion between myself and the members of the school committee about what the COVID response team is and does. I think it, um, you know, the COVID response team is an advisory group that we, as a school committee, allowed Mary Beth to form. She could have not had a team, she could have chosen to spoke, just call various advisors to make her decision. She um, I I it's, it is clear to me from the emails that it is not seen that way, that that people it's clear that we haven't, and I take responsibility, I guess, that we have not communicated clearly that this group is not dictating to the schools what to do, that, um, it's really hard for me, especially um, for my fellow school committee members, um, but also from the public to have a perception that somehow we are doing something uh, that we're hiding something that's been really, really difficult. I really question what it is that people think that we're hiding since they have been both decisions to go remote and decisions to go hybrid have, people have been unhappy with. So it is difficult to know how people perceive us as having a specific agenda. Um, so I will get off my soapbox about that, but that has been hard. I think, um, because it's an advisory, it certainly can be regrouped. M- M- Mary Beth can and should regroup that team in any way that she can, uh, uh, anyway that she chooses. Um. That being said, uh, one more thing to say about that, and I'm sorry to speak so long, but I um, it has been a collaborative, professional team in every meeting that I have been in, including meetings in which we have had significant disagreement. We have been collaborative, professional and respectful in every meeting that I have been in. Um, it is a functioning group. I'm gonna just leave it at that. Um, I separately, I do want to say that I, to um, Anna's point about having a conversation about reducing the six feet, I think, is something that I feel comfortable that the district is discussing because we've seen it at those, um, when the elementary principals and middle level principals presented, we've seen it. Um, so I feel confident that that is being discussed and that, um, because I just want people to be really mindful of how big a can of worms that is going to be. Um, and to discuss it in a really, really thoughtful way, because I think that's going to be a big deal. To open up that less than six feet. Thank you. Just want to remind people that next week is a busy week. Um, with both our meeting on Wednesday and our meeting on Thursday. And if you're so inclined, um, the Buonum Board of Health is holding a forum. I'm not sure if it's this, I I think it's this Monday, but it might be the following. Yeah, it's definitely this Monday because I wouldn't put it in the same week as the break, so. Um, that I entertain a motion to adjourn. Peter, do you want to make the motion?
No, I I'd like to make a motion to to have um, that LMS experts speak next, at our next meeting on the fourteenth. I'd like that added to the agenda.
You mean the meeting on the sixteenth?
Sixteen, sorry, sixteen. I'm thinking of the Electoral College, sorry.
I would, I would, I would second that motion. I think as long as it's a relatively short presentation, I feel like we've already talked about it so much. I would second Peter's motion to have this person come.
Going to do that, we'll need to start no later than probably what, five thirty?
I, well, he said he can keep it to twenty minutes or so.
One of the thing, if I could just jump in and, you know, I I do know that the meeting on the sixteenth is jam packed. I think we're probably already looking three to four hours. And Peter, I hear this concern and I, and I want to let you know that I think that, you know, a a robust, more robust LMS is something that that certainly could be looked at down the road. Um, but when I look at all of the priorities that we have right now, that try, th- it, this does not appear to be the moment because there is no way that we could tell all of our families and all of our teachers, you're changing that the basic structure of our delivery of virtual.
So I have just a a point of order, Mary Beth. I think actually, part of the reason I I wanted to talk about it now is like, I agree, I don't know that this year is the year to do it. But I know we are approaching the budget and I know that that's part of it. And so I kind of felt like now isn't a terrible time. But just as a point of order, Peter's talked about twenty minutes, he's made a motion, I've seconded it. We're just talking about adding it to the agenda for twenty minutes to talk about whether or not it is something we want to pursue. I mean, so I would like to offer a point of order that we've had a motion and a second on the floor.
And and I'd like to say I'm weary that it's, I'm constantly mischaracterized. I didn't say it was something we can put on this year. It's something that had we started in March, we would have been ready by midsummer. It's, it would just take weeks, but I'm not saying this year because I understand it will take uh, you know, putting together the, the teachers, the administration, students, uh, parents, um, school committee.
Yeah, I I think, I think we haven't, but I think, I think we haven't even decided if we want to do that. Like, let's have the conversation first and then decide if we even want to spend more time. And I think.
And I just, I, my question is actually about the motion that's on the table. Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Uh, Peter, is this expert that you are bringing, is he offering to sell us a specific system? Is that what he is giving us a presentation?
Nope, he just wants us to, he wants to, he, as a favor, he's willing to educate us on what a proper re- uh, learning management system is.
Okay, I, it, no, that's helpful because I, I guess I, being brand new and just coming from the charting of the course, you know, um, you know, I had a concern about, like, if he's a specific offender with a specific.
Nope.
Thing, so he's not.
National and national expert on a pro- what proper learning management systems are. He's willing to talk to us about all the benefits and just introduce it to us so we can decide if this is something we want to pursue.
He's not selling or.
No.
Specific system.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
It just what the, what the capabilities of of a true learning management system are.
So he does not work for a company that makes or sells a learning management system.
What he, well, he has his own company, but that's not what he's presenting. He's not even gonna talk about his own product. He's just gonna talk about learn, a proper learning management system.
And like what, what to look for? And the benefits and maybe the features, that kind of thing?
Exactly.
But he does have his own company that does sell this product.
I don't see what that. I don't, I don't understand the relevance. It's, if, I I want to educate the school committee and the community about what it, Google Classroom is nothing more than, and I've been using it for seven years as a way to store data. It's a way to collect and disseminate files. Um, and organize them. A learning management system grade, helps grade, tells the teachers what, you know, which, through formative assessments, which parts, uh, students are struggling on.
Peter, I have one more question about the, so, um, w- would, do you anticipate after he presents and it's a educate, it's like a, he's presenting information to us so that we understand. Um, after that, do you anticipate that there would be a motion, like an actionable, an actionable item? Or is it just that we are listening and then we have all this, all of us have a shared understanding and then we just move on? Or is there an action item right after the presentation? A motion?
That, right now, I'm just try, I'm just hoping to educate because I've seen this um, learning management system in place for four years. I've seen it in action. And I don't, I'd no expect that we would make a motion to say, hey, let's pursue this. Maybe later on, we can say this is something worth pursuing.
I just, because I, like.
You're, you're trying to box me in, you're all trying to box me in with your.
Peter, I, I'm, I, I, I'm actually new to the school committee and I haven't been there for a presentation like this. So I'm asking you about whether afterwards, like, is it, do we just listen or is there something that?
Well, let's wait and see after the presentation. If someone else wants to make a motion that, hey, this is something worth pursuing for the next, over the next two or three years. You know, I'm, we're talking long term here.
I would just like to point out, we've now spent almost more time talking about whether or not to put it on the agenda than Peter's original request for a twenty minute presentation. I think David be at that point quite hilariously not long ago. Uh, there's a, there's a motion, there's a second, I I I I moved to vote.
And I, and I continue to receive emails asking me for a preapproval process. You're asking me, what do I know about learning management systems? What are the benefits? How and why it would benefit the district was the latest email I received.
I, Michelle, I moved, I moved to vote. I think let's just either talk about it or not talk about it, but let's stop the torturous debate, seriously.
Do you need a second?
We have one. Mary Beth, did you want to say something?
I just, the other option I would put on the table is I would be happy to have our um, t- technology instructional folks come to the committee and give an overview of what an LMS is. Um, that may make more sense than bringing out, bringing someone from the outside right now um, and kind of update, what, here's what we have. Um, and here, here are the options that are out there. Um, that would be another possibility um, to address this issue. Um, we probably couldn't get it done by the sixteenth. I don't know if we'd have enough time, but we could get it done very shortly afterwards.
I I disagree. This, this expert, that's what he does. That his sole focus, like a laser beam, is learn, is remote, you know, our learning management systems for hybrid, remote and in person. It's, it can, I just think, I love our tech team. I think they're brilliant, but I think this person would have a far greater expertise.
It's not even a tech team thing, right? Because I mean, we're obviously going through this and in 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 incorporating a learning manager system has nothing to do with sort of the uh, quality of the tech team we have in place. I think bringing up the fact that we could actually have them come in now is actually a little too, little too late. Right? We could have said that two months ago when this first came up.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of building the budget, right? I mean, we're talking about strategic planning.
This would be a capital project anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like now's the time. Peter's asked for twenty minutes. He's made a motion. I've seconded it. We've had discussion. I've moved to vote. Like, I I don't understand why we're still talking about this.
I, I, I feel like we, I think we need to vote. I, I, I have to say this.
I agree. Um. Peter?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Julie, huh?
Yes.
Michelle?
I'm gonna say no.
Dana?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Michelle Bailey? Um, no. Okay, so that means on the next agenda, we've added twenty minutes, which tonight was supposed to be two hours. We're at an hour and we're forty-five minutes over, so it needs to be twenty minutes and we need to start the meeting at six.
I I I I disagree with the fact that you're poisoning the well.
I'm not. Saying that twenty.
You're just starting off with, with a neg- with making it seem like this is a negative presentation when it should be something we should be excited about.
Saying to the committee, it's a presentation for twenty minutes. It's not gonna be an hour, hour and a half discussion about LMS. Whether we should purchase one.
Michelle, I I totally agree with you. I think it has to be preliminary and start. I agree with you.
Excuse me, excuse me. We cannot lose our focus. We're moving into a very, very difficult time where we have a budget to prepare and we have a plan to be looking at. And if we lose our focus, we're not gonna achieve our goals. So we're got, we, we cannot spend, but we will have to start the meeting at six o'clock. So, um, please plan your schedules accordingly.
Uh, we're talking about the meeting on the sixteenth at six o'clock, correct?
Yeah, well, that's convenient, sixteen at six.
And we need to really ensure, Michelle, that information gets changed on the, so that the public knows that they can be there.
Um, I think for what it's worth, even though our meeting ran long, I think it served the public's interest. We heard from more of the public. We had a pretty good, robust conversation, so I know it's a little later, but I, I think the public's interest was served uh, in the way that we intended, so. I know sometimes we do run late, but I think sometimes it's okay.
No, I agree with that.
I have a question about what happens to the questions that weren't answered? That didn't get addressed, like in the Q and A or in the chat?
A lot of them in the Q and A where we can't see all of you in Google Review and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the Google Doc? Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, I don't know. It just seemed like a lot of people had questions. I I don't know if there's a way to address those. There's probably no way to vet the people. I'm not sure. There were questions in the chat, comments in the chat, questions in the Q and A.
I think the Google form, though, it's to go back to Mary Beth and leadership team.
And I'll, and I'll share that not only with our leadership team, but I'm also happy to share those comments with.
Okay.
As well.
And Peter, can you just give Janelle the information so there can be an exhibit made from the person that's coming in, so we know his name? You know, and all of, you know, just so we have a packet just to look at before we go in.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I think Peter's talking, but he's muted.
Oh. Sorry.
Sorry, I was, uh, yes, like, he are, he has a presentation made because that's what he does. He presents.
Perfect, perfect. So Janelle can just have it forward to Janelle and she can link it on the agenda. Perfect.
I moved to adjourn at nine forty-seven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, uh, Julia?
Yes, I.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Um, Michelle Bailey, yes. All right, so six PM on.